Okay. Seeing that we do have a quorum with respect to the school committee, thank you for attending. We have another finance subcommittee meeting prior to our 7:00 school committee meeting. At the last finance subcommittee meeting, we basically were trying to fine tune, but we needed some information, further information, from the superintendent and her staff. We basically brought things into a balanced budget, pretty much, based on a $160 million figure that we're working with, but we were seeing if there was any further fine tuning or tweaking that we could do. Madam Superintendent, could you basically inform the school committee as to your findings and those topics that we were inquiring about at the close of our last meeting, please?
Yes, and before we begin, I once again want to remind everybody that when we talk about all of these issues tonight in finance, there are still many people laid off, drastic cuts that have been taken, and we will continue to work diligently to try to address this so that we can continually, whether it is in the next couple of days where we're coming to the end of school, as we finish looking at grants and other fundings that may become available, although it will not be a lot of money, it'll be money that we will keep on top of all summer long. So I just want to preface that before we start the meeting. Going to the school committee, when we left the previous meeting last Wednesday, I believe, one of the things that we talked about or that you asked us about was an additional $200,000 coming off of the substitute list, and would we be able to shift that money? You asked about a report on could they be used to bring MTAs back as substitutes in buildings. I'll explain our reasoning and our rationale for that. We also talked about the Carol White grant, which was coming in. There were some issues about physical education positions. I'll have Mike Thomas discuss that with you. We have early retirement incentives. I'm pleased to tell you that today Aldo Petronio started to meet with a number of our staff members, and that's from across the board, whether it's teachers, custodians, MTAs. This went out to non-union staff members, it went out to all of our staff members that might find themselves in that area. So that started today. They have until Friday, though, to let us know if they're going to take the early retirement incentives. You also asked us to look at compliance issues, and you asked us to prioritize in the end because there will be cuts and there will be layoffs in the school department. There's been some misinformation on that, and I'll make it a little clearer as we go along, but we did prioritize for you our priorities with staffing, and you asked that we prioritize our programs, should we also have any funding to bring programs back, whether that's through grants or additional funds that become available. So I want to start with the Carol White grant. Deputy Superintendent Thomas, will you give the school committee an update on that?
Good evening. The grant, Carol White Physical Fitness Grant, was awarded to the school department for $1.7 million, which covers a three-year period, starting in September of, actually, it would start with this September school year, September 1st, 2014. In the grant, it's just for the, it's for the middle schools in the Keith Center. The grant focuses on the middle school physical education curriculum and wellness curriculum. It adds six teachers back into the middle schools in a half position at the Keith Center for the alternative schools that currently do not have a physical education instructor certified. The grant comes, so what happened was, and I can speak to this because I was one of them, there used to be two physical education teachers at the four old junior highs, which obviously now are middle schools. Those were taken away with the last round of budget cuts in 2010, and we went down to one physical education teacher in each of the junior highs, and then obviously the other, the middle schools. This grant basically adds six positions, one to each of the six middle schools. So the money cannot be, you cannot use the money to rehire the people that, if any of those people lost their job through pink slips, that money can't be used to hire physical education teachers back who have been laid off. You have to take the grant and fulfill the obligation of the grant, you have to add the six teachers to the middle schools, to the, to the six teachers that are already there. So you would end up with 12 teachers throughout the six middle schools, and then a half teacher at the Keith Center. That's part of the grant. The grant also calls for a coordinator, which we could work with the, with the grant and the, the people that run the grant about what we could do with that coordinator's position of maybe picking up a current employee off of that. We may be allowed to pick up a position there, but that would be it as far as any, any current locally funded positions. The rest of the grant is for health and wellness, awareness, training, professional development. There's a component for after-school programs to teach kids about healthy eating, and also how to basically be physically fit for lifelong fitness activities. There's a CrossFit program, so the way it's supposed to work is that the six teachers that are hired, the additional teachers, they're to come in. One teacher is basically to continue to teach a traditional physical education and wellness curriculum. The extra teacher would teach what they call a CrossFit program, which also comes with a full curriculum of, you know, basically heart rate monitors, how students can monitor their heart rate, why they're doing different physical activities. So there's a whole curriculum that comes with the CrossFit program. So that's all part of this physical fitness grant. Also, and there's also a, a health component to it where students learn about healthy eating and living healthy lifestyles. So, so pretty much, that's, that's the information we got after reading the grant and meeting with the, with Mr. Caruso and Mary Ellen Corain about when they wrote the grant, what was the goal of it, and that's pretty much, you know, wraps it up. If you have any questions, I can answer as much as I can.
So, right now, six phys ed positions are part of the RIF cuts, right?
Correct.
So, we would have to ensure that cuts don't happen at the middle school to continue to secure this grant? Like, let's say, there's six teachers now, one at each school, we're supposed to double that using this grant?
Correct.
If, if we're not able to fund six teachers at every school, or one teacher at every one of the middle schools due to cuts, do we risk losing the grant?
Correct, yes.
So, likely if we would just shift phys ed personnel?
Currently, the, out of the six, there are two high school physical education instructors, one adapted physical education teacher who obviously travels system-wide, one elementary school teacher, and two middle school teachers. That makes up the six that currently have pink slips.
Okay. So we'd probably be looking to prioritize the two middle school as a, to save this grant?
Correct.
$1.7, and then be able to allow us to hire six additional?
We accept the grant, we hire additional people.
But under the grant for three years, with the expectation, then, that we'd take those positions on?
Well, again, it would depend on the budget. You know, people hired from that grant would have to be made aware that the grant would, they would be employed for three years.
Conditional of the?
Conditional, obviously, they'd have to fall under, they get hired as obviously BEA members, and it would also fall under seniority, so if anybody was hired after them, you'd have to obviously follow the, the union rules as far as RIF notices go.
We, we-
In three years from now.
With accepting grants going forward, and Mr. Thomas is right, you know, seniority does come in if a number of years go by and we're able to keep them on for the grant. It might not be those teachers that are riffed, but I think we have to make sure we have that on lists as to what we have for grants under the different categories, just so we're always aware of the positions that are so-called at-risk. If we're going year to year, and if a grant's life is three years, then we need to be aware of when it ends and how many positions, and we, that's part of, again, how we're going to have to be looking at the budgets differently going forward, so that you're always aware of accepting the grants. And, you know, it certainly brings, you know, wealth to the district for kids for many reasons, but we have to have that so we clearly understand the risk involved after it ends.
Is there, I mean, I totally agree with that in the consideration for what happens three years from now, if budgets haven't improved, or our priority list is somewhere other than phys ed and, and, you know, something like that, but is it, the goal, you talked about, a little bit about the goals of the grant. Is it the goal of the grant for these types of programs, the healthy eating, the CrossFit type programs, to become sustainable, permanent programs in the middle schools? Or is the goal of the grant to be able to create these offerings for a three-year period?
No, it's supposed to be sustained, because what I still know about wellness and, and physical education, it's moving towards lifelong fitness goals instead of the old traditional team sport games that you don't play, you know, basketball when you're 50, 60 years old. You move into more things that keep you healthy, eating and exercise, and that, that's the goals, and that's what wellness has moved to and continues. This grant is supposed to push you more in that direction.
Okay.
So you're supposed to be able to sustain that curriculum throughout and move forward.
Post-grant movement.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
This is Julie.
So right now, we have, given, take the, the RIF notices aside, right now, we have a gym teacher in each of the middle schools, correct?
Correct, yep. One in each school, yes.
So, we're going to be adding another full-time staff member to these schools under the grant.
Exactly.
How will that, how will that additional staff member be utilized in, in the concept of the timeframe or the time, you know, the, the schedule for the students? Like, how, how will they interact with the kids? Will they be getting an additional period of gym or health or whatever? You know, how is that day going to look like with the additional staff member and how they're going to be utilized?
Yeah, Mr. Murray, you can help me answer this question. They were supposed to spend, obviously, more, more kids in the gym rather than, obviously, the one that are in there now.
In some buildings, a health teacher is actually doing, is that disruption, so it would allow us to put the health teacher, so focused on health, and then the wellness component would be built into the curriculum in the gym. So, we have two gym teachers that have, have to group one, one session, working with the CrossFit and some of those things, and then the next phys ed session, the old group, obviously, it's on the wellness component, we discussed it, talked about.
So the student's schedule doesn't change, it's just that we have more personnel teaching the same number of students for the same number of ti, for the same amount of time?
It would be a bridge, and we would have smaller, smaller rooms. This class would change.
So you have a wellness, or health teacher now that would be able to do more, will that equate to more time with students?
Yes.
And, and how would you work that into the schedule?
In the health environment, basically, instead of his responsibility is two days a cycle to the gym, we can concentrate four days a cycle to the health. So, it actually allows us to reduce some of our class size, guards and health, and for the gym, we actually, the gym is an area.
Is there more time on task for the students, though?
No.
We just have more personnel for, okay.
It would be, it would be the same.
Oh, it would be more time on task. Sorry to interrupt, because you'd basically go from one teacher with about 50 kids to one teacher with probably 30.
Yeah, but they still have that 30-minute or 60-minute?
Oh, the time would be the same.
That's what I'm saying. Okay. But we have to bring back those six teachers first before we can even-
Exactly.
-take this on.
Yep. You have to get the two middle school people back.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
I don't know if we can do that, given the budget constraints.
We'll make some recommendations tonight based on that. I just wanted you to have that information.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And again, the grant, I believe-
I mean, it's a great grant, but-
And it hasn't been accepted yet by you, the school committee.
Right.
So, it's not-
Doesn't help us with that budget?
No. I was hoping we could give you better news about that, but it doesn't, we might, again, we might be able to make up maybe one position with, because it does allow for a coordinator to run the grant. That might help us make up one position, but that would be it.
They were clear on the not surplanting.
Yeah.
And we thought if we could get through this by July 1st, but I guess it's clear in the grant that we got it based on-
Additional staff.
It was additional.
Okay, and it's a three-year?
Three, yes, correct.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Mr. George.
There is a prohibition in this grant that you hire the person who's more of a previous. If we can find money to exceed that, they wouldn't have to reapply, they could stay, this is all in the process of hiring these people, they could stay on and fit right into the regular system, given we can find additional funds to do that.
Correct.
If we can't, then they would leave at that point, because we couldn't sustain them, given we don't have budget.
Correct.
Okay.
It might not be those exact people that were hired if other phys ed teachers came into Brockton after them.
After them, okay.
Yeah, if somebody retired that's been in the system for a long time, which I believe in the next three years there are a few phys ed teachers that are retiring, then, then obviously it would go by seniority at that point, so it's probably, it wouldn't be the same six people that were hired off the grant, it would be the people that were below them on the list. You still have to go by seniority.
But would that then force us to hire whoever leaves? We still have to have 12 in essence?
Not once the grant runs out, when the grant runs out in three years.
What I'm talking before that, let's say, a year and a half from now, two people retire, so then we still have to have a number of 12 to maintain the-
In the middle schools, correct.
Good enough.
Yep.
I know we have a lot to cover in a very short period of time. With respect to this, Mike, I just would like to say that we are, as we all know, in this community and surrounding community experiment, experiencing a heroin and drug epidemic. I would suggest that the middle schools are a very transitionary period for our students in that age, that we make sure this wellness component also has a significant awareness and input with respect to, oh, drug awareness and things like that.
Yep.
Please, you know-
Good point, yep.
Make sure that that is incorporated into the program if, if we go forward, all right?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, the next is the early retirement incentives. I'm sure this can be very quick, Mr. Petronio. I'll just remind you that today was the day Mr. Petronio was meeting with those that had showed interest in early retirement, and they have until Friday to, to let us know if this is an option they want.
Yes, we had a meeting at 4:30 tonight, had about 15 people come in. I had teachers, custodians, paras, bilingual community facilitators, a whole vast group of people, many questions. Couple of them are definitely interested, and the others are waiting to hear back. They have health insurance questions for me, stuff that I couldn't really answer, how you transition from the regular health insurance we have as an employee to the retirement board. And I know it's still, I know it's still a city plan, but I don't know how you transition, and also at what age you go from our, you know, Blue Cross, our Harvard pilgrim to Medicare. So I told them I'd get that information tomorrow morning, call the retirement board, call Maureen Cruz's office, and I'd email them all out, the answers to that. But most of the questions were simply, I think, a little angst in that people didn't want to retire, but they're, you know, they're, they're looking at the incentive as something that is bringing them to that point, and it'll help us with bringing back positions that have currently been riffed.
You know, can I, can I say something to that? I will tell you, and this is upsetting to us, that we have heard from other districts that teachers are applying in their districts, teachers they're very interested in, and the one comment that came back, I won't mention the district, said to one of our administrators, "I wish the people in our district felt the way that your employees feel about Brockton." So it's interesting that they don't want to leave, they don't want to go someplace else. It's interesting to hear, Mr. Petronio, talk about people making life choice changes as far as retirement goes, but for the most part, you know, here they are working, and people don't really want to leave.
Correct.
So I think that says a lot for the kind of school system that you give to our employees.
So I'll keep you updated on that. By Friday, they'll turn in their applications, and at which point, hopefully Monday, meet with the deputies and the superintendent to review the list of who's, you know, applying, and making sure that they meet the specifications we've required in the documents, and then come up with a list of hopeful candidates that will accept this, and then the plan as to who we can call back in each of those categories. Any questions?
Mr. Petronio, you want to stay? Did you have all your things?
Sure, most of them.
Okay, budget update?
So, the next question was about substitutes. Mr. Minicello, we, we recommended to you last Wednesday evening a number of more painful cuts, and the recommendation was, again, when we had originally talked about bringing back 170 teachers, we felt there were obviously still implications, and I want to make sure I say to everybody, too. I want to remind everybody, when you talk about the 199 pink slips that we gave out, you know, for our professional staff, I want to remind everybody that in the superintendent's recommended budget, to deal with the increase in our student population, there were many more teaching positions added in because of class size, because of compliance, so I don't, you know, as we start to take a look at bringing back, we're still deficient. You, we looked at the cuts last week, we recommended, and these were recommendations, I apologize to people, because I know the paper was reporting that these had been made by the school committee. In fact, it was just presented last Wednesday evening, and tonight, we are looking to have the recommendations approved. We talked about the parent liaison positions at $221,000, the freshman sports at $40,000, the elementary intermurals, the middle school intermurals, equipment, reduced hours at our parent information center, an after-school program, transportation staff member, reduction in Brockton High School professional development, a per capita on school supplies and materials totaling $340,000. I did speak to my concerns about that, and it was the music program, and that is up to $15,000. We did meet with Mr. McCrina, and it was transportation for the band for away games, it was transportation for parades and district meets that they're in, and we were hopeful that with some of that, there could also be some support, Mr. McCrina felt, from the band boosters. Thank goodness for, for groups like that that support our students in so many ways. So that was from $10,000, we looked at that at about $15,000 in, in cost there. And we also had a race to the top, $80,000. So, so at this point, those are all the recommendations we're making to you for cuts, and before I go into the substitute piece, with those additional cuts last week, we had brought our certified staff reduction down to eight members, and I think Mr. Petronio has given you out the updated sheet, and it does show still all our personnel cuts and all of the programmatic cuts that we have made to date, including these additional cuts. So it brings me to the substitute piece. So Mr. Minicello recommended that we take a look at, in order to help other units not be laid off, you know, how could they support with substitute teachers, we decided to look at about $200,000, and the recommendation was to look at MTA members who could possibly be building substitutes. As we started to look at that, you've got a list in there, I'm not sure this is completely accurate, we went back and forth on this till late today, there's some difficulty, and we will address this in the next coming year, because when you look at substitutes, some of it is professional development, some of it are actually members that are out ill and we're substituting. So again, I don't want you, again, it is not completely accurate, but it does give you an idea through SubFinder how many people we replace. Again, it is not all related to illness, it is related to some professional development. But in looking at that, we would like to recommend to you at this point, that we, we think that was a good recommendation from Mr. Minicello, we'll continue to work on attendance, incentives, ways to message it to make sure our members are healthy and can be in the classroom. But we would like to be able to look at that additional 200,000, I think it was 235,000 in the end.
235, yes.
And we would like to be able to start to prioritize and bring back some of our paras and MTAs under our compliance issues for sped in our bilingual classrooms. If you accept that, we have identified 10 paraprofessionals and five monitor teacher assistants that with all of the cuts we would make tonight, we could bring back an additional 15, and start to actually look at our other units. That would still leave, I do want to bring to your attention, that would still leave eight professional staff members out, that would be made up of administrators, and there would be a number of other specialists at this point are not recalled. Now, when I say that, we also, as Mr. Petronio just presented, looking at early incentive retirements. We're looking at finalizing some race to the top money. We feel like if there's any good news, if you call, looking at grants and seeing some leftover funding. We will need till about the end of the week into early next week, we hope to be able to identify before the recalls go out next week. So, again, I don't have accurate figures on, on that right now, but that would still leave out eight certified staff members, and I believe we had 73, we added, is it 20 parent liaisons to 93? From that, we would take an additional 15 off, so that would be eight certified staff members and 86 non-certified staff members that at this point, with all of the cuts that we have made, would, would be receiving their layoff notices, that it would go into effect on the last day of school.
So, if you're talking about, so we're talking about 13 administrative assistants, 17 custodians, two craftsmen, it would go to 42 paraprofessionals?
Paraprofessionals, we'd need by 10.
So that would be 42 instead of 52.
Uh huh.
It would go to 13 MTAs instead of 18, right?
Correct.
And then?
Can I also, while you're mentioning that, Mr. Minicello, under the paras and MTAs, we have had a number of children not requiring one-on-ones, there have been change in ed plans, so with paras and MTAs, we are also looking at not reducing people, but not infilling positions. So those numbers, I don't have accurate numbers, but we are starting to look at possibly reducing, Deputy Superintendent Barry, it was, it was the paras by six?
By 10, by at least six.
And there were four in the MTA areas. So if that helps you with the, you know, looking at the numbers of actual people, that starts to bring that down. We're not replacing them at this point, but they're not actual people getting layoff notices.
So you're thinking we only need to bring back four?
Paras instead of 10, because we have six that aren't?
No, we do need to, we would have to bring back all 10 for compliance. So, but if you look at the paras that are left, I could subtract six from the 42, and I could subtract four from the 13 of actual people.
Okay. And these, the 10 and the 5 are necessary for compliance?
Yes.
That doesn't leave us much choice?
We look at special education, I'm sorry?
That doesn't leave us a choice, then, if it's a compliance issue?
At this point here, this is what we have until, as I said, we can identify some more monies within the next seven days, is my guess, we would be able to come back to and start to identify some more ways to bring people back, and I'll talk about prioritizing, which is what you would ask us to do.
So you come up with what number, in terms of total?
I believe we would still have eight certified staff members.
Right, yeah.
Now, I say 86, but I just took off the six and the four that are not actual people from the MTA and the paro list.
Okay.
Because of not replacing.
Okay.
Another 10, so 76, it would leave us under non-certified.
And then eight certified?
Eight certified.
Okay.
And that's with every cut that we have put forth at this time.
Okay.
Including the subs, $230,000 out of the subbudget.
It would be, it would be looking at the sub money that Mr. Minicello had put forward, there was some other monies left over as we were bringing back staff members from our previous cuts. So that is my recommendation to you at this point.
Can I ask something about the subs? If you take a look at the information you gave us tonight, you take the grades nine to 12 per diem rate of $85, of the total cost of $143,735, and then the grades six to eight per diem of $169,065, that's $312,800 that we're not planning on paying based on what we've utilized in the past, which is more than we cut additionally. It, but what it doesn't include is long-term subs and permanent subs. Can we possibly look at the permanent sub, or long-term subs, being utilized not by outside staff, but by our existing paras and MTAs?
I'm sure we could, you're talking about-
Do we have a permanent?
But as we, as we bring people from-
We were talking about possibly having a permanent MTA in each of the schools to serve as a sub.
With the $200,000 that was identified.
Okay. Well, we're saving $313,000 by not having, right off the top, by not having the per diem substitutes on a daily basis-
Right.
-at the upper levels.
Uh huh.
Which is, granted, it's not the $500,000 that we've already cut, but it's more, it's more than the $240,000 that we additionally were going to cut. Is there some room in there that we can utilize those funds to bring some coverage into those schools, the elementary levels?
I think some of that money is there for the professional development piece, so I don't think we, you know, the one person covering can fill, let's say if you brought five people out for professional development, I don't think that one person can cover those five is what some of that money is. That's why we've been discussing that, although we want to cut back- Although we want to cut back the subs at the middle and high school level, any professional development that's done still needs some sort of coverage.
I go with eight.
I think it's more of just the unplanned absence.
Seventeen custodians.
And wouldn't that be the per diem at 312? Or you don't know?
Well, that per diem at 312, again, it's for the per diem subs, but they could be for personal days, it could be for jury duty, illness.
So you don't think that we can come into this any more than we already have?
Oh, absolutely not. I'm already a little...
You're already nervous.
At where it's at.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'm just trying to find a way to shift the money from calling in outside subs if we can comfortably utilize somebody full-time, all the time, and just shift them around, if we can work it with the union, with the MTA's union on the sidebar agreement or something like that, to be able to keep them employed, maybe not in their traditional setting, but in another setting that they can still be employed and we can still utilize them.
I think the problem is it's not one person out per day, you know, for each month of the year. I think what you find is that in September, October, there aren't that many absences. But as you get to Christmas, there are quite a few. As you get to the spring, there's a lot.
Yeah.
So I don't think you have that flexibility that you're describing. I think that's a problem. You might have, you know, eight absences in one middle school with only one MTA.
Yeah.
So I think that's the problem.
I'm sorry, we're just moving.
And I just had one question on the PARS. The ones that are, other than the compliance ones that you're recommending to bring back, there's still another 42 or 48. Does that include your library paraprofessionals that are being cut?
Well, I'm glad you asked that because that's the next area of prioritizing, just so you know what PARS are prioritizing for compliance.
Yeah, because right now they're cut, is that correct? So what happens to that time?
They're part of the 42.
So what happens to the students if they don't have a library?
So here's what we do, Ms. Joyce. You again ask for a couple of different ways of prioritizing. So let me put this aside for a second and answer that.
Okay.
So my teaching positions, we put back here, we have identified staffing and programmatic cuts to presently call back 191. Teaching positions, that of course leaves the BEA, there are some administrators, specialists still not recalled. There were 78 non-teaching positions that have remained pink slipped, again, where we just talked about the incentive. So the next one was meeting compliance mandates with SED bilingual PARS, MTAs. So with the $235,000, we would use that to bring back five MTAs and 10 PARS. And this is looking at things such as you mentioned, you know, the health PARS, one-on-one PARS with SED. Looking at, again, MTAs that work in special needs classrooms. So we prioritized, those were the compliance areas.
Okay.
So that was our, that was our next priority area. Next, we put building management, safety and efficiency. We still have a number of administrative assistants that actually staff schools. We looked at, you know, very difficult to operate without them. Again, you've heard me talk about, again, the custodians to maintain our buildings. And we also put in there substitutes. So we have made a cut in the budget that could result in a loss of content instruction if we're going to be putting students in study halls in both the middle school and high school. So when you asked us to prioritize, it would obviously be the teaching positions first, our compliance, and we're looking at the MTAs and the PARS for those very things. Building management, efficiency and safety. And our last priority area was family and community engagement. Because again, when you talk about the parent liaisons, and I don't think I need to make this clear, when I sat here a month ago and talked about an entry plan, one of the areas we talked about for our families were those very people that connect families to the schools, that actually can, you know, to make parents advocates with our students. We talked about increasing the classes for ESL for parents. So that again is our fourth priority in looking at the different areas if money were to become available.
Okay, I still have my question though.
I'm sorry.
On the library PARS, okay?
Right, the library PARS.
As far as the structure, the scheduling in the elementary levels, we have a library power in the elementary schools. Do they, they spend time with the children in their class in the library while the teacher, I assume, is that's their planning time?
It is part of the contractual obligation.
So without a library power, what happens to that planning time?
That was our priorities on a number of the PARS coming back. But I think at this point, we still don't have every PAR back. That was after SED, after bilingual, so at this point, you're correct, they are still out. And that does present an issue for us.
So if we don't bring them back, what, how do we?
We haven't crossed that bridge yet.
How do we deal with that, that issue?
And that's an issue because, as you say, in the elementary schools, they're using those classes for teacher planning times. Those implicate, you know, certainly contractual issues that we have across the district.
Would it be possible between now and Thursday to get the numbers and what it would cost to bring them back?
Yes.
For that specific position? It's the domino effect that I'm looking at, you know, how that, like losing a gym teacher, what happens to that block of time that the students are in gym if we don't have a teacher taking that class?
We were hoping to, it feels like a no-win situation. You know, we're going to one group and there are issues over here with, again, you know, teaching positions, our teacher, music teacher. Now, there's really, you know, it's very hard to do this because there's no one expendable. There is not anybody that we have hired that is expendable. So this becomes a very, very difficult process. And I think what we were looking to do tonight is to move on from the budget cuts that we have made and hopefully approve our recommendations. And beyond that, we were hoping before the end of the week, or I said within the next seven days, to come with you and identify some more areas that we're hopeful about. When I mentioned the race to the top, we're hopeful that maybe even three figures would be coming back to, again, allow us to come to you and go in the next wave of groups that we would bring back.
Okay.
But you're absolutely right. I mean, we spent today, you know, there isn't any, again, you say a music teacher, you know, important to our teacher, they're also allowing our contract to stay in effect.
How many library PARS are there throughout the system? I mean, I assume one in every elementary school, right?
We have some librarians though in the schools, too, in the elementary.
So the most popular library PARS at the elementary level.
So how many buildings is that? 20? 20 buildings? It's probably about 20, it's probably the same number as the parent liaisons.
But they weren't all given, you know, RIF notices.
Okay.
I don't have that exact number.
Okay, so maybe by Thursday we'll have that, Tom.
Yeah, please.
That's what's hard about this one. You're working with the generalists, so when we're bringing people back on the list, we're bringing people back based on where they are on the list, if I see what.
The hardest thing for human resources again is because of the things that you mentioned, people could have to change from the job they were doing.
That's the thing, yeah.
So again, there could be somebody that's a building power that we say, you're going to be a library power now. Or, you know, again, we have to look at compliance first, which is what we had discussed. But there's very much, and this becomes very difficult for HR, whether it's our certified staff members or our non-certified staff members, there are people whose jobs could change drastically. And what, you know this, I don't have to bring this to your attention, people have had professional development, they've worked with a special needs student, so they've been the library PAR. You know, they've worked with Carrie Cobb in her office and understand what it takes to be that library PAR, you know, class management, you know, all of those types of things that hopefully we will do our best to make sure people remain in place. But we do have to make sure that those areas are addressed first.
I think the number comes to 105.
I want to look back on these numbers here. So Mr. Petronio, would you go through this with us? So the 199 is together on our list. We mentioned 13 administrative assistants, 17 custodians.
Correct.
Two craftsmen. 52 paraprofessionals?
Yes.
That is correct there, not 42, it's 52.
52.
Okay.
But we're now down to 32, right? Because of the six and the 10?
Thirty-six.
And then 18 monitor teacher assistants. So from that, from the 52, it would leave 42 with our PARS. And then I asked you to subtract another six from that.
So that's 36.
So that's 36. And on the MTAs?
Nine.
I had brought it down, five, which was 13, and then minus another four, which is nine.
Right. And then 20 parent liaisons.
Yes.
On top of that.
I thought we had them in there already, we didn't move them over.
No. 20 parent liaisons, that brings us to 105.
Four total positions currently RIFed.
Oh, I'm sorry, then I'm misstating the numbers.
Well, because some of these positions are vacant positions, so superintendents sometimes are speaking about the number of actual pink slips that were mailed over.
I'm thinking they're live bodies.
Not every one of them. Some of the PAR positions are unfilled and, actually, I think it's just some of the PARS are unfilled. I think everything else is a live body.
So how many are, how many are unfilled positions?
In the PARS?
Yeah. So if we take 105 and subtract the unfilled positions?
I think it's around 12 or 15 that are unfilled.
Okay, so then it comes down to about what you said. Because I thought they were all filled positions. Okay.
So we went to prioritizing the staffing and programs.
Any more questions on prioritization of staffing? Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Kathy, I know you had mentioned last time that we had two buildings based on the RIFs that were absent an administrative assistant. We have enough administrative assistants left to kind of redistribute and get coverage in those buildings or not?
Again, we're going to have to go to our central administrative offices because that's where our administrative assistants would be. Executive team has again talked about looking at every one of the offices at Central because we would have to at this point, you know, if money is not available, then we would be redistributing some of our administrative assistants because that is a priority to cover those buildings. And that's the Barrett Russell and I believe the George School at this point.
Yeah, so well, it doesn't come without compromise somewhere else. We have enough admin assistants that we'll be able to reposition people to make sure that all of our schools have coverage.
We'll make sure the schools are our priority. What that will do to other offices, you know, I've worked, you know, I've worked in a few offices. One certainly is the community school office and I can't imagine, I mean, we'll have to redistribute and, you know, we'll do the best we can. It's like the parent information center. You know, they do an excellent job. We have cut $34,000 from their office for this summer. It's a reduction in staff. We're going to have reduced hours and I need to give them time to be able to process all of their records. It might not be as timely as it was last summer. But in fairness to parents and for customer service, we will let them know that if they come in on a Thursday, we'll have their records now processed by the next day, it might be a day or two. So I think it's just, I just want to make that clear that it really pushes our resources to a limit. They can just do so much in the hours that they're there. I know they go above and beyond and it'll be difficult. But yes, we'll have to make that a priority.
Thank you.
Next item?
The other things that you had asked us about was prioritizing programs. So if money becomes available, one of the things we certainly would do for the programs is the first thing that we would want to bring back, obviously, would be what we would call enhancing the student's school day experience. And number one that came to all of our minds to recommend to you is we have to make sure that children have these opportunities during the school day. For instance, technology. We continue to reduce the technology budget by this year, $2 million. So as far as during the school day, that would be our number one recommendation to you with PAR coming in. I'll be talking to you later about that during our school committee meeting. We talked about digital learning experiences and, you know, our assessments. The other thing that was, we felt very strongly about during the school day was our professional development. We've cut $100,000 from professional development. So if you were asking us to prioritize, you know, what we would bring back, those would be during the school day, our number one priorities. If you ask about after school, what enhances the student's experience after school, our number one recommendation would be, and it would have to be academic support programs for our students. I mean, we have to ensure that they're going to receive a high school diploma, that they're able to remain in school. And for many people, that's, you know, certainly hours above and beyond the school day, and that's been very successful for us in Brockton. And the other thing that I bring to your attention there is we still do have 21st Century after-school programs in a number of our schools, and we will now not have that equally distributed across the district. Our next recommendation to you would be looking at middle school intermurals. And the reason why we made that our number one program priority, certainly under the area of extracurricular for students, is we looked at the number of students that it impacts. It was about an $84,000 budget item that we had reduced, and $16,000 of that was for equipment. But participation there is pretty unlimited and widespread. It isn't just making a team. So if we had an opportunity to bring back a program in middle school, we had decimated. So I think we're all feeling the same. So as far as those type of programs, that's my number one priority or our number one priority recommendation. The second would be freshman sports. You're talking obviously sports, you know, across our high school. It gives kids opportunities before they're, you know, sophomores or juniors to make teams, to be competitive, and certainly to compete with other high school districts. I believe most have freshman sports. Our next one was elementary intermurals. For the same reasons, we did middle, high school and elementary, bringing back some of their programs. That was a $58,000 price tag. It also is unlimited, involves many students at that level. And our last recommendation, actually not our last, was the band transportation, the $15,000. Our fifth recommendation for priority under programs were clubs for middle school and high school. That was over $67,000. And our last recommendation under the lodge, we didn't go into all the small items that you reduced by 1,000 or 2,000. Our last recommendation was middle school sports, and that again was based on the number of participants. Not that we don't value that, I don't want people thinking that we don't value any of these programs. Every one of these cuts, and I know how difficult it was for you to make those cuts. So we have this for you and as you start to, whether it's, you know, looking at additional funds that may become available, those would be our recommendations for school day and
Anyone else? Any questions? Okay. We have scheduled a public hearing on this budget, which will take place at the Arnone, just to let you know. The little theater's being utilized for some theatrical activities. So we're going to have our public hearing over at the Arnone where we've had most of our finance subcommittee meetings. And then after that, we will have a special meeting on the budget where we need to basically approve what we have right now. And understand that as monies come in, even after Thursday, then there will be amendments and additions. And that's where we'll get into priorities of staff, priorities of programming. So we are still speaking with people. I do believe there will be some minor tweaks to what we've been talking about this evening, but right now that's what is on the schedule. As some people did know, that we had a joint meeting with the school committee, the mayor and the city council scheduled for Thursday. But the budget takes priority for the school system. So the school committee notified Mr. Sullivan, the president of the city council, last week that we weren't going to be able to participate due to those meetings for this Thursday. He, after reflection, opted to postpone the meeting. We have not picked a new date yet. Most likely that would be sometime, I think, in July, after the 4th of July. So if you were planning to go to that meeting at East, that is not taking place. And we will be again over at the Arnone at 6:30 for the public hearing on the budget and then the special meeting of the school committee at 7 o'clock. So anyone else?
I'd also like to let everybody know that you were certainly with me the other night before the city council. And one of the things, they had actually invited me to speak this past Monday evening. We had negotiations, we were unable to be there. So I have been invited on July 21st. I know it is the middle of our summer. During that time, I will once again be able to talk to the city council. They will ask questions. There were a number of things that did come up. During that time, I'll answer all those questions about administration. There were questions about the impact on the school district. I'm trying to think of some of the other questions the city council had asked. But I will be prepared that evening to answer their questions and we won't be so backed up with budget and I'll once again be able to speak to the city council. So I look forward to that opportunity.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor? Okay, school committee will start in five minutes. Okay, school committee will start in five minutes.
You know, the mayor just texted me and is about running five minutes late, so we'll wait for him to come before we start, okay?
Time having arrived, I call this meeting of the Brockton School Committee to order and ask everyone to please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Got a low chair here. Where's the, aren't any of the chairs?
Has it moved up?
Yeah, I can't mess with it now. I'm not happy with it. I'll get the chair as soon as we start hearing of visitors. Okay, we open each meeting with a process called Hearing of Visitors. Any resident of the city that would like to be heard by the mayor, superintendent, and school committee is free to come forward and address us for up to three minutes. There is no exchange or response from the school committee. All matters are taken under advisement. And we do have a number of folks who have signed up this evening. So I'll start first by asking for Barbara Duffy, please.
Some of you may recognize or remember me. Some of you may not. I am the founder of My Turn, which I started in 1984 when I was six years old and ran up until 2008, when at that time, my youngest of four children was diagnosed with a rare degenerative retinal disease, which has robbed him of most of his sight. Raising four kids and working full-time was always a trick and I had to step back and I couldn't possibly leave Brockton. So now I actually am a vice president at Bamsy. So I went from running a great organization to working for a great organization. I came tonight because I really felt compelled as the founder and a board member of My Turn. What you might not know is some of the history. And I know I have three minutes and I have absolutely no intention of speaking longer. I completely understand that you have extraordinary decisions to make financially around your budget. I get how tight it is. But I just want to give you a little backfill about the STEP program. The STEP program was started in 1997. And it was started because there were a number of young people who really should have been pursuing post-secondary education, but for any number of reasons were not. I can think of one young woman, Penny Cameron, lived on Trebo Street in a three-family. And Penny had a really difficult family situation and never thought she'd go to college. And we pushed and we worked and Penny is now a nurse at Good Samaritan Medical Center, who took care of my mother-in-law the last time she was there. I think about Maria Andrade, who's an adjustment counselor at the Gilmore School, who came into the STEP program. Between 1997 and this year, the STEP program has worked with over 2,000 young people. And of those 2,000 young people, do you realize that about 98% of them pursue and graduate from four-year institutions of higher ed? We are not creaming the crop. We are taking those kids who, without the STEP program, without the intensive handholding, without us going to the home and helping with the FAFSA, they're not going to go to college. And so I look at, there was a young woman I will never forget, and there was somebody here at the time, long time ago since retired, who said that this young woman wasn't bright enough to go to the community college. She said she wanted to go to Regis College. And that person who worked with her came to me screaming at me, "Why do you put these ideas in these kids' heads?" You know, she went to Regis College. She was the first Haitian to go to Regis College. And do you know the first thing she did when she made Dean's List first semester was come back and see that particular individual here at Brockton High? It's not smoke and mirrors, the STEP program. It's pretty fundamental. It's how do you take a young person whose life will change? Penny is now married, a mother, with three children, a homeowner in Brockton, voting for people, paying her taxes. And I am telling you with every bit I have in my soul that I know what this program has done for these kids. I run into them all the time. So I'm asking you, the STEP program to me, '97, this isn't a fluff thing. This is a basic part of the fiber of this high school. If you know Salon Javas, if you know Jamie Andrade, I am telling you, you have two people from Brockton, two people who speak multiple languages, two people who, when these kids' moms meet with these two, listen. And I'll tell you, we went from originally being something that I think guidance thought, huh, do we really need these people? To guidance coming to us and asking, hey, which kids on my caseload do you have and can you tell me where they're going? So I am here as a board member and a founder. This one program is so dear to my heart because it's a game changer. You are taking kids out of poverty and you are giving them a future. And I am pleading with you to please keep that line item in your budget. It's such, given your total budget, and I'm sure everybody thinks it's important, it's such a small investment to change 60 lives for the better. You're improving your city by keeping this program intact. I thank you very much for listening to me. I thank you for the time, Your Honor, and Kathy Smith. And it was good to see some of my old friends who I recall. And I would ask you to seriously consider this allocation of funding. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara. Our next speaker signed in is Kim Gibson, president of the BEA.
Good evening, Superintendent Smith, Mayor Carpenter, and school committee members. First of all, I want to thank all school committee members for the due diligence you've done over this budget. It's been very concerning over the past few weeks to see what you've had to face in regards to the mayor's recommended budget for the school department. I have to say, I was very concerned by your recent posting on Facebook under Mayor Bill Carpenter's page. It began with "mission accomplished." I have to say, I've received many phone calls since that posting. And the fact that that mission is accomplished on the backs of children is extremely concerning for me and I speak for all the union presidents. And I'm sure I'm speak for most employees of this school department. Because further in that post, it stated, "No layoffs or reductions in city services." Last I checked, I was an employee of the city of Brockton. That is very concerning because we are all dedicated to this city. And I don't know why we're not considered in that little statement, which was very misleading for this school district. Because the cuts that this district is facing are detrimental and are going to have a lasting impact on the children of this city. And if we're not out advocating for those children, I don't know what our responsibility is. Because they are the future leaders of this city. I am a graduate of the class of 1988 and I'm proud of that. I may not live in this city, but I have plenty of people who still do. And I plan on having those conversations with them and making sure that they become active in every single thing that goes on in the city, including this budget. So I want to thank you all again for all of your dedication to this city. Because it's unbelievable leaders like you, they will move this district forward. Thank you.
I will, I'll respond later when we talk about the budget. No response allowed during hearing of visitors. The next speaker due up is Andrea Donaruma.
Good evening, Mayor Carpenter, Superintendent Smith, and school committee members. My name is Andrea Donaruma. I am a mother of three school-aged children who attend the Hancock School, West Middle School, and Brockton High School. I have lived in Brockton for 15 years and have chosen to raise my family here with my husband, who is a lifelong resident. As a mother, I am concerned about possible cuts and layoffs in the Brockton Public Schools. Teachers, MTA's, pairs, administrative assistants, administrators, and custodians have received what we call pink slips. There are possible cuts that could reduce the number of crossing guards, high school and middle school substitute teachers. Proposed cuts have included the elimination of intramural sports at the elementary, middle school, freshman sports at the high school, and cutting the music department's budget some. All children deserve a chance to learn and grow with the many opportunities that are currently a part of the school system that makes Brockton great. My children continue to grow by taking advantage of opportunities they have had in the Brockton Schools. Sports have helped my oldest two children learn more about themselves and others and life skills that will carry with them. Thanks to the Brockton School System, my daughter now plays three instruments and is learning a fourth. She was the top flutist in the state's junior district competition out of 90-plus flutists. She has received a perfect score on her English MCAS and has received a perfect score on the math MCAs four times. Four times. As a taxpayer, I am concerned about a balanced city budget in all departments. While a city budget has been proposed that calls for no new taxes this year, there have been layoffs and proposed reduction in services in the school department. The city of Brockton's website lists public schools as a city department. The proposed city budget includes a $3.6 million increase in funding to the school department. While this is greatly appreciated, more is needed. The school department is trying to overcome a deficit of approximately $5.7 million due to the loss of federal and state funding. This is very troublesome as the students will be the ones most affected. In conclusion, I am asking the mayor's office, the city council, and school department to work together to resolve the budget, rehire staff, and give every student the chance to excel to their full potential. We should be concentrating our efforts on the children. The city of Brockton is only as good as its next generation. Please help make this happen. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Pat Cook. Good evening.
Superintendent Smith and members of the school committee. I'm a resident taxpayer here in the city of Brockton. I've lived here for over 30 years. And I've raised two wonderful, sorry, four wonderful children. Forgot the other two. They're all wonderful. They're all wonderful. And they're wonderful products of the Brockton Public School System. They're now adults. I am sitting here today, I wanted to speak to you on behalf of the Brockton Public School nurses. And I've been employed as a school nurse here in the city for 14 years. I know my time is limited, but I do want to share with you a few very important numbers. Life-threatening allergies, 298. EpiPens administered to individuals with these life-threatening allergies, six. That's six lives saved by Brockton Public School nurses. Children who have a diagnosis of asthma in the Brockton Public Schools, 2,800 students. They're taught every day how to use their inhalers and take their medication and prevent asthma symptoms. Students that have a diagnosis of diabetes, 45 children. They go to the nurse's office, some many times a day, to test their blood sugar and have, we teach them how to keep their blood sugar at a range so that they will ward off life-threatening issues later in their lives. Students that have a mental health or behavioral diagnosis, over 1,500 students in the city. In my school alone, we have a grade-five emotionally impaired classroom. And many times, we are called to do mental health assessments on these students after they have had issues in their classroom. Students who have seen the school nurse at least once this year, 88% of the 17,000 students in the city, 88% have made that visit. 50 students on average per day see the school nurse. I saw about 50 today myself. 500 to 1 is the ratio of students to nurse that is recommended by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. We have 31 school nurses in the city of Brockton. This being said, we're operating at a shortfall of three nurses. And I have one final, very, very important number to share with you. This is the number one. This is the child whose life was saved. He arrived at school without a pulse. The school nurse was there. She administered CPR four years ago and saved his life. So please, I know all the numbers that you have to take into consideration, but take into consideration all those numbers I've just spoken to you about because this is a very important number. Thank you for your time and have a good evening.
Our next speaker is Ziana DeFortunato.
I graduated from Brockton High in the class of 2009. I also graduated from Regis College just last year. And I am a My Turn alum. And I could have had something prepared here today, but I'd much rather speak to you guys from the heart. Like the founder of the My Turn program spoke about, I come from a single-parent household. And to be completely honest with you, if it was not for My Turn, I don't think my mom would have known how to fill out a FAFSA. I would have never visited a college for the first time. And overall, what the program means to me is chance. I mentor a lot of young kids that come here to Brockton High now. And I see the day-to-day things that they have to deal with. And I was just in high school four years ago and it's a totally different world to me. And My Turn equals chance. And everyone sitting here has been given a chance, once in their life, to become the best that they can be. And I think that alleviating My Turn is not the best idea. It's not the best alternative for whatever issues you guys are having. I know that there's other ways that we can come together as a community to keep this program intact because it's very important to me and I know it's very important to Ms. Alves. And I hope that you guys find a way to work it out so that we can keep this program because every child deserves a chance to become better than their parents, better than their grandparents, and better than some of us sitting here today. Thank you so much.
This is exciting, I must say, the last time. Ziana DeFortunato, who just spoke, is my amazing daughter, product of a single mom. She referred to so eloquently, but she's absolutely right. And when she offered me an opportunity to come before the committee this evening, I've sat, co-chair, I believe, was the title they gave me for the Brockton Commission on Women's Issues several years ago. And I now operate a small home-based business where I too mentor, not just the children, but the moms of these children. So the founder that spoke for My Turn, I'm not sure where she is behind me. It's almost, it's just very sad to see, to hear the stories. And again, I speak to the moms of these amazing children that I'm sure are sitting behind me, that are coming down the road. I know it's a tough decision that has to be made when it comes to the numbers. I applaud the Brockton school nurse for giving us the numbers. Being in business is always about the numbers. I just recently spent a morning with Oprah Winfrey and John Mackey. I just recently spent a morning with Oprah Winfrey and John Mackey, who most of us might not know, but is the CEO and founder of an amazing store now called Whole Foods. So I go to Weymouth, to the Whole Foods, and, you know, when I sat down, it was through TV, didn't, I wasn't at the meeting personally, but he gave us something to think about, which is a shift in the way we're doing things. It's no longer, you know, capitalism from a numbers perspective, but the book that he wrote is called Conscious Capitalism. We have to begin to make decisions from a place in our heart for others. The word "love" I haven't heard this evening. I love my daughter. It wasn't her idea to become into the world with a single mom. You know, unfortunately, her dad didn't care much about what was going to happen after high school. My Turn did, and I thank Ms. Alves, and I remember those days, coming up to the school, her giving me text messages, and it was just beautiful to see because, for whatever reason, what I couldn't provide, I probably couldn't learn how to fill out a helper, FAFSA, but I don't think that would have been the main issue, but it was time, most of it. And the program, it would be a sad, it wouldn't be a conscious choice to eliminate the program. And I know in business that's tough. I know it is. I deal with it every day, the numbers, but when I speak to these moms, I'm dealing with lots of single moms who are making the choices to invest in a business that they know will probably have an opportunity for their children to go on and do amazing things. I just got off the phone with one who wants to walk into the financial aid office with the first-year check in her hand and say it's a done deal, who probably won't have to learn how to fill out a FAFSA should this opportunity of business work for her, should the numbers work. But at the end of the day, it's her conscience, the love for her child, and I'm sure it's not one mother that gives birth. We're blessed to be able to have that opportunity to give births to these children. Think of them from your conscience and not from the numbers. I thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to speak, and I'm going to keep doing it. I have one more to go. And should we still be here in Brockton? You'll hear his number, be called. So I thank you for the chance, the opportunity to speak, and please just remember the children and from a conscious place, the love. That's all I have to say. Thank you much.
I know you don't respond, but I think that deserves a response. That was certainly eloquent. I thank you for coming, and if we haven't quite said the word "love," I hope you can understand, all of you, that it has been very, very difficult when you do love a school system and you have seen what you've built, and this has been very, very difficult, and I'm glad you bring that, you know, to our consciousness. And so we do love the Brockton Public Schools, and we'll continue to fight for every dollar for our children and our programs and our families.
Okay, so I think I'm going to turn it to you, Superintendent. I think we have a special presentation of the Baron Selly Award, and seeing as that's kind of a community schools type of thing, Superintendent, I'll let you take that over.
Okay. Then, not this consent agenda, we're going to do this first. Is that correct?
I thought you wanted Baron Selly.
You want Baron Selly first, okay. Well, of course, it is my pleasure, having served on the Community School Advisory Board for many years. The highlight of our year was always to nominate and to award to a person who, in the spirit of Albert Baron Selly, one of the founders of community schools, was to give of your time, to give of yourself, and never to want recognition, but that is what the Baron Selly is all about. So I'm also proud to introduce to you the new Director of Community Schools, Maxine Richardson. I'd like her to come down and share with us a little bit about the award, and Christina Lutz, I saw you come in, who actually nominated Baron Selly Award winner this year. Ladies?
Thank you very much, Mayor Carpenter and Superintendent Smith and the members of the school committee. It's my pleasure, as the new Director of Community Schools, to speak about our new recipient of the award. The community schools was started many years ago with the opening of this high school. The award came later with Albert Baron Selly, and he was a school committee member. He was also chairperson of the Community Schools Advisory Board for quite a few years. And because of his want to recognize people who kind of stayed in the background and who also gave of their time selflessly to help the students of Brockton, the families, this award has continued, and so we're very proud of this award. And it's a wonderful opportunity to showcase somebody who truly deserves it. This year, we had quite a few nominees, and we really looked at all those letters. They were wonderful letters, and we wish we could have had more than one award winner. But the Executive Board of the Community Schools Advisory Board unanimously selected Alicia Clark. So it's one of your people here, so we're quite excited about that. I don't know if that's a first in the history of the award, but we're very excited for that. And we chose, I didn't choose her, but the Executive Board chose her because she has this spirit of selflessness, and I want to say it, love for the special needs students in the city. And also, the other part of it is the families of those students, who often get overlooked, the siblings, who maybe have to deal with some of those issues of the special needs students. And so we looked at that letter that Christina wrote, and it was just overwhelming, and it was unanimous. And so I'll let Christina talk a little bit about Alicia, and we thank her for doing this.
Okay. Thank you, Maxine, for considering my nomination for Alicia because she's a wonderful person. I kind of fell into the Shining Stars program, just perusing, looking for some way to volunteer my time. I have four kids, and I try to get them to be involved in the city as well because it is a great city. And I saw Shining Stars, and I have a son, I have four children, I have a child at the Pluff who loves it, and I have triplets that are ten years old, and one of my triplets, Gunner, who you probably have all heard of, in a good way, in an interesting way, but he has Asperger's, and he, there's no, there was never a place for him to go after school. He couldn't go to camps. He couldn't go to after-school programs. He's got a strong little personality, and unfortunately, not everyone understands that. Shining Stars understands that and embraces it and never looks funny at a child, and they don't, you know, the children there don't look at the child for saying something weird or silly or perseverating on Plants vs. Zombies or Minecraft. Everyone at her program is just, it's like we walk in and this burden is off our shoulders. There's no stress, there's no personas we have to put on, there's no excuses we have to make for the way our child might act, and they all just have a blast. And I brought Gunner, and then I started bringing my other children, who have more fun than ever, and if Gunner doesn't go, my other children will go and have the best time ever. And I go and I participate, and the parents participate, and we play scooter boards, and we run, and we play, and we roll around on the floor, and it's outstanding and it's amazing, and everyone comes feeling great and everyone leaves feeling great and more understood and closer, and just normal. Not that any of us are normal because I never would want to be, but we feel like we fit in somewhere. So thank you so much, Alicia, because it's such a beautiful, beautiful program, and you're a beautiful person, so thank you.
Jump right in, Christina.
Thank you.
So, Alicia, I also want to congratulate you because, as you know, I was an early supporter of the mission of Shining Stars. I first introduced Alicia to Dr. Taurasi about three years ago, maybe now, or three years ago, and she had expressed some frustration about trying to get this program going and bouncing around among various city agencies and the school department and just not being able to find the right partnership. And I made the introduction to Dr. Taurasi and Mr. Dornigan, and I both lobbied very strongly to get the school committee's support and the administration's support for Shining Stars. So I think it's an incredible program. I'm so glad we got it into the schools, and I hope you can continue to expand it. You're welcome. Anyone else? Yeah? No? Okay, now we're going to do the Pluff School? I don't know, you want to do the consent?
Sure.
I thought you asked me to get those things out of the way early. Okay, all right.
I was going to say, out of the way.
Well, out of order, I should say, out of order.
Well, we've all been going through quite a bit with respect to our budget, the committee, the school system, all of the entire city and all of you who have been attentive, coming to the meetings. So Thursday evening, I had the pleasure of attending Pluff Idol over at the Pluff School, and it was basically, you know, what you would think, a talent show. There were twenty acts, and the kids were amazing. There were, you know, singers, there were instrumentals, there was a magician, there were dancers. Some of the acts were individuals, some of the acts had two or three participants. It just showed you the talent and excitement that was going on in the school. And you would have thought that after every single act, the crowd, the cheering that was going on, that each act was first place because they just supported each other, and it was just so moving how they supported each other and were so excited for each other. And of course, some acts were a little bit better than others, some acts were really off the charts in terms of incredible. I was texting my wife, and I'm going, this is incredible. So I just wanted to point out to all of this community, the love, we'll use that term, that we have here in Brockton. And I wanted to first thank Ms. Nezarella, who really has a wonderful school, like many of the principals in this district, but you could tell the camaraderie between the staff, and I'm not just talking about the teachers, I'm talking about the entire staff because so many people helped out in that building that night. I want to just thank David Fadaski for helping out with lighting, Steve Forts and Rick Hatch with setup and sound, Eric Westcott with sound, Lou DeGrace, Tim Gale with cleanup, Stacy Bester, concession stand, Carmen Forts, Christine Valen, Rowan Augustine. Our judges were Anna Gonzalez, Julie McLean, Rob Howard, Chris Demmers, and these judges were so into it, they were dressed up in costume. We had Elvis, we had, was Ms. Gonzalez the Chiquita lady? Remember when we were kids, the Chiquita lady, right? Who was Mr. Howard? Jay-Z?
Roscoe Jenkins.
Roscoe Jenkins. And then I thought that Mr. Demmers was a blonde Alice Cooper, but who was it?
I don't know.
Oh, I don't know. He looked like blonde Alice Cooper. He looked like he was enjoying the costume too much, but whatever. But it was great. It was just incredible. There was Kerry Roddenbush, who helped out with the judging, Sarah Curly, who is the chorus director. She organized it. She was incredible in terms of you could tell how much went into the night, and it was just great. Mr. McDonald and Mr. Forts and Ms. Curly, Mike Scanlon and Anthony Manuel put together an open letter to Brockton at the very end that was dedicated to our friend Mike Healy. And so when I saw this video and musical, I wanted to share it with everyone because we've just, we've all been going through so much. So I just want to present Mr. Forts, who I think is going to play it for us this evening. I just wanted to lighten things up because, again, we've been going through so much serious business with the budget. I figured we could share it with the committee and all of you, and you could see what makes Brockton so great. So Mr. Forts. Ms. Nezarella, did I forget anyone?
Is this on?
Did I, I didn't forget anyone?
Good evening, Mayor Carpenter and Superintendent Smith. So I'm just going to take a quick minute and just talk about how this all came about really quick. Thank you, by the way. About several months ago, I was in the cafeteria after we had already discussed the idea of having Pluff Idol, and Mike Healy came up to me, and I've never spoken to Mike before, but I have his daughter at the school, but he came up to me and said that he was glad that we're doing Pluff Idol, and he wanted us to think about doing a song about Brockton. He talked about his passion and love for Brockton, and I, you know, I said the same thing back to him about Brockton. And I didn't think anything big of it at the time, but then, three days after that, he passed away. And when I came to school that day, Ms. Nezarella approached me, and so did Sarah Curly, and they asked me if I could do the song. So when I went home, and the song was, it was originally "Open Letter to New York City" by the Beastie Boys. So when I went home and listened to the song, I loved the idea about Brockton, about doing it about Brockton, but I wanted to do something a little more modern that the kids would like and that they would actually know. But it was the same lines. It was "Empire State of Mind" by Jay-Z and Alicia Keys, and it was about New York. So I made it about Brockton, and with everything that we're going through right now, I love the city. My kids love the city, my family loves the city, and I decided to make it. So let me see if I can get it on. Here it is. And we did this recording at my friend Anthony Manuel's studio. He's the music teacher over at East Middle School. There we go. Is the volume on here? Is the volume on here?
So you can see why I was moved by it that evening and I wanted to share it with everyone. I will say this, Mr. Forts, you're good, but Ms. Curly is much better. I mean, you know, the truth is the truth. But I really wanted everyone to see that because I think it shows what's great about our community and it just comes at the right time. And again, Ms. N, you have a great staff over at that school and you can just see that evening, what was going on. Some of the kids that were performing that evening were some of the quietest kids you'd ever... When I, I know some of these kids and I'm like, "Are you kidding me?" All of a sudden onstage, that little flame became a huge inferno and they were just in their element. So it was just a moving night, it was a fun night, it was electric. And again, I just wanted to share that with everybody. Thanks again, Mr. Forts.
Steve, that was unbelievable. And I did, I do have to also quickly note there was a subtle tribute at the end there also to Ernie Bronco and Pat Brennan and two other great people that we lost this past year. So that was an awesome touch at the end too. Superintendent?
A real tribute, I'm sure Jackie and Alana and Catherine, I'm sure it was just wonderful for them, especially this time of year. I'm sure we're all thinking of them this past Sunday. And, you know, thanks for all you do, you're terrific. Any chance we can get royalties, sell it, fundraiser?
Okay, we're good? We'll move on? Okay. All right, at this time of the meeting, we will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a manner in which the school committee is able to consider routine matters of business as a block. However, any member of the school committee can request that an individual item be removed from the consent agenda for individual discussion. So at this time, I'll ask if any school committee members have a request to remove an item from the consent agenda. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion made and properly seconded to accept the consent agenda, all in favor? opposed, approved unanimously.
Just want to comment, I think you can see the number of grants, they continue to come in, we continue to send them to the grants office. I know they're working very, very hard and I just, you know, I continually say how much I appreciate that, we'll keep you updated. I hope you, in looking at the new format, we're putting the amounts right in there and we'll refer back to them as we get word on the grants.
Okay. Okay to move ahead? All right, the next agenda item is actually a communication that I forwarded to the school committee last week. Chartwell's Food Services in their contract allocates $15,000 from their funds, not from school budget funds, for the school committee to have the discretion to allocate to local charitable organizations, 501(c)(3)'s. I've asked the school committee this year to allocate that money towards the cost of a summer parks and playgrounds program that we're instituting through the mayor's children's fund. This program, I'll give you a quick synopsis, I don't want to take too much time on it, but we will be opening five city playgrounds for children ages seven through 12, half-days for eight weeks during the summer. This is, I guess, an earlier age counterpart to Brockton After Dark, targeting kids ages seven through 12, many of whom are latchkey kids due to working parents or are home during the day, unsupervised during the summertime. We've targeted five playgrounds, we hope to expand it in future years. We've targeted five playgrounds that are in the area of neighborhoods where kids can access by walking or riding a bicycle to the playground. 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, we'll be hiring 20 college students and 10 high school students for summer jobs to be working on the five playgrounds. So we see a lot of benefits to this. It'll be athletic activities, soccer, basketball, other activities in the morning. The program is eligible for the school lunch program, so Chartwell's will be serving a free, healthy school lunch to all the kids that are at the playgrounds. And if we get sufficient funding for the program, we'll provide transportation and get the kids over to one of the city pools on the hot days also. I see a lot of benefits to this. I feel as a school department and as a community, you know, we do have to worry about the welfare of the kids in July and August when the schools are not in session, particularly this age group. There's no cost to the program. I think, you know, we're really trying to identify, reach out to families that may not have the financial ability to send their kids off to a summer camp or a summer school program. This will be an alternative that will be free and a lot of good things will come with this. I mean, it's exercise and supervision, it's anti-obesity, it's making sure kids get a healthy, free lunch in the middle of the day. It's a mentoring opportunity where these youngsters will be, have as camp counselors. Brockton kids who have gone on to college and obviously made some good decisions and provide good role models and the mentoring will happen naturally. And it also provides a safe haven for kids during the day, during the summertime. So I think when we talk about, when we talk about initiatives to keep kids away from drugs, initiatives to keep kids away from guns and violence, initiatives to keep kids away from gangs, it starts in this age group, seven through 12. And I think this is a critical need. I hope we can expand it larger in the future. The total cost of running the program will be about $40,000. It's being raised from charitable sources, we're not spending any taxpayer money on this. Brockton Area Workforce Investment Board is partnering with us. So I'd ask the school committee for their consideration in allocating those charitable funds from Chartwell's this year to go towards the cost of running the summer parks and playground program for kids ages seven through 12. I'll entertain any discussion.
Miss Joyce?
Question on how you plan on getting the information out there to the kids, how they'll find out about the program?
Yeah. A variety of ways. We'll have volunteers targeting the neighborhoods, the playgrounds, I'm gonna do these off the top of my head. We try to look at them geographically around the city to spread them around geographically. So North Junior High, O'Donnell's Playground, the Gilmore School Playground, Ash Street Playground, and I'm missing one. James Edgar Playground, that we'll actually be cutting the ribbon on tomorrow, the beautiful, about $200,000 of improvements to that playground. So we will target, we're gonna target flyer the neighborhoods around those playgrounds because that's the, that's the audience we're looking to attract. They'll also be using social media, they'll also be asking the schools to help spread the word in the schools and those neighborhoods that have students in those grades.
Okay.
And it's, it's a first-year program, so you know, we expect we'll do a little adjusting along the way.
Finance Subcommittee meeting over at the R. Knone. You know, many of us had concerns about, you know, the intramural programs that are being eliminated. We had questions about, we directed Aldo, Mr. Petronio, to notify Mr. Condon and request how we could basically give back the SROs, the $125,000. So there was concern about us being able to supplant that money in terms of everything you just said, you know, programs for kids where our dollars are so short. So any discussion with respect to Mr. Condon on those items?
In just a few moments, when we get to discussion of the budget, I'll be bringing forward to the committee several proposals which will include, from the city side, restoring funding for both SROs and intramural sports.
Okay.
In six figures, far larger than this amount I'm asking for for the playgrounds. Mr. Jordan?
Is there any limitation to the number of youngsters that can participate on each one of these playgrounds?
Yeah. That's a great question because that's something we've had a lot of discussion about because we're not sure. The current staffing will, is equipped to handle comfortably about 80 kids per playground, but we do have the availability of a few extra counselors if the, if the demand exceeds the capacity. The entire five playgrounds will be overseen by a certified teacher who's already been hired for a stipend. And so that teacher will be circulating around the five locations. So if turnout is heavier in one playground than another, we'll have the ability to quickly shift a couple of the student counselors from one location to another. So in terms of exactly how many, you know, kids will we get, we're not sure, but we think we've made provisions for more than adequate staffing for about 300 kids. And we feel we, we've got a few extra slots for counselors we could fill if we had to, if the, if the demand exceeds 300.
Second question I have, there may be...
I hope we have that problem.
A number of youngsters that show up either from other neighborhoods or from the same neighborhood that just want to have lunch, is a provision for them to be able to do that?
We're not gonna turn anyone away for lunch. That's one of the goals of the program, is another way to get the lunches, bring the lunches to the kids. And I think it's, you know, it's a, it's a healthy, free lunch, five days a week, wrapped around athletic activities, mentoring, and hopefully, if we get enough funding, a trip to the pool. Mr. Henningson?
Thank you. So just a couple of quick questions. So you said that it's gonna be staffed by a certified teacher, correct?
It's, the program will be overseen by a certified teacher. And then the, it'll, most of the counselors will be college students because we wanted a little bit older, more mature young adults. But we also identified a percentage, you know, roughly about a fourth or a third of the counselor positions for high school students because we wanna, we also want to incorporate some high school kids into the program and, but they would be working with college-age students on the playgrounds.
So in the five locations, there's gonna be like a supervisor of so on?
There would be four college students at every playground, two high school student counselors at every playground, and they would all be overseen by the certified teacher overseeing the program.
So from a safety perspective?
Right.
That's covered?
Right.
Okay, great.
Right.
And so not only they're gonna be...
Right now, we're at a 10 to 1 ratio, but we're told that 15 to 1 is still okay. If the ratio got beyond 15 to 1, we would add additional staff.
Okay. So not only we're gonna be dealing with sports and they're gonna be, you know, served a lunch, but you know, these, these students will provide mentoring opportunities to...
Well, that was one of the reasons why we wanted a heavy percentage, besides the maturity factor, to be college students. You know, we think the mentoring happens on its own because we've got Brockton kids who have obviously made some good choices and our college students looking to earn some money during the summer and we've got kids seven through 12 hanging out with Brockton kids that are attending college.
Yeah. I just think it's a, after hearing that, I had some concerns in the beginning and after hearing a little bit more on the program, it's definitely something that sounds like a good program.
And we're raising the money from other agencies and private sources, we're not expending any city funds. And the money that I'm asking you to allocate from Chartwell's is some money that they're required in their contract to set aside to give back to Brockton-based nonprofit. Mr. Robinson, and I'll get you to it.
Program require registration or is it like a drop-in kind of thing?
They can register on the spot. I'm told we have to have a registration, we've gotta get a release signed by a parent or guardian. But we would provide that to them on the first day and let them bring it home to get it signed. We're trying to include kids and cover the legalities at the same times.
Yeah.
The kids that might have trouble getting the signature are probably the ones that need to be there the most.
Who's, how are the staff being recruited and hired?
Through BayWhip.
Okay.
BayWhip is overseeing the hiring of the, of the students with some input from Mr. Conley, who's gonna oversee the program.
Great. And they're providing the training as well or is there any training involved?
Absolutely. And there's actually, they're gonna have a couple extra days for training.
Great. Thank you.
Mrs. Sullivan?
I just wanted to know what kind of training the instructors, the college students would have in working with youth?
Yeah. I mean, it's gonna be, this job is basically overseeing the kids while they play basketball, play soccer, do some other activities and have lunch. So I believe that we've got to set aside two days of training that will be overseen by BayWhip for, before we kick off the camp sessions.
Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Joyce? You know what? I don't think I've asked that question yet, but I guess they would have to be.
Okay.
I'm not directly involved. I said BayWhip has stepped up and is handling the...
Can we, can you give us the assurance that that will happen?
Yeah, I'll make sure they get queried.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. I think we query everyone that we let near kids nowadays. I'll follow up with them to make sure that's part of the process. Mrs. Sullivan?
On the sites where they'll be eating?
Yep.
If there's another summer program there that's already being run, then would that interfere with the lunches?
I don't think so. I think the lunches are eligible for any Brockton resident that shows up.
Okay.
So there's, you know, the lunches are equal for everybody. It'll be a little tricky the first week in determining how many, but I'm told Chartwell's has the ability to bring back some more if they don't bring enough the first time.
Okay.
Yeah. We're, we're about getting the stuff to the kids, not about turning kids away.
Right.
Usually when you have open sites like that, not only is it for any student there that's age 18 and under, they usually have to do it on site, so it could be somebody that just stops in.
Right.
Hard to limit when you have an open site.
Correct. We're not limiting, and it's, we have a similar program with Brockton After Dark now.
Do you still have the other, there's all six sites, is it, that serve lunch? Don't we have a total of 11 sites that serve lunch only?
I don't know them all, but we have quite a few.
So we'll have the five with the...
These are five additional, right.
With the program?
Right.
Or are those five on top of the 11?
I don't know what the total number is. I know we've already submitted the paperwork to Chartwell's to have these five sites included.
Okay.
The total number that Chartwell's is servicing, we'd have to ask Chartwell's, I don't know.
We can have that in your packet, I think it's ready. We can check with, is John Snell Grove still involved with the summer program with Chartwell's? We'll get that information due Friday.
Okay, great.
I don't know the total number, but these are in addition.
Okay.
Anything else? You sure? A motion would be nice.
Motion to allocate the $15,000, Chartwell's, I don't know what we're calling it, discretionary nonprofit fund?
It's the mayor's, it's called, it's the mayor's youth fund, which is a 501(c)(3) and the money is gonna run through there and be dispersed through there.
Perfect. So motion to move the $15,000 from the discretionary Chartwell's fund to...
To mayor's children's fund, actually, to get, mayor's children's fund. Yep, discussion on the motion?
On the motion that it's for this year only and we will reconsider it next year?
Sure.
Is that possible?
This year's $15,000.
Yep.
Because that's an annual, that's a recurring...
An annual appropriation?
Contractual appropriation that we have with Chartwell's, so this year's $15,000.
So the motion is amended to reflect that the funding is for this year only, subject to future consideration. Let's turn you up, yeah.
Is it Chartwell's outreach money? How do we identify that?
How do I identify that money?
Yes, it's purely outreach funds and they become available once we...
Yes, it's community outreach funds, and they become available once we, Chartwells has had they hold to us.
All right, so--
So it's the, the community outreach set-aside funds?
Community outreach set-aside funds?
Yes.
All right. Okay.
The motion is evolving, Mr. Robinson, but--
I'm still behind--
I guess, how about the motion as amended if everyone heard the amendments?
Yes.
And we've got it properly seconded.
Seconded?
Yep. Motion's on the floor, properly seconded, all in favor? opposed? Thank you very much. The money will go a long way towards taking care of kids this summer. Thank you. Okay. So we're on to the report of the Superintendent of Schools.
Well, tonight is a little bit bittersweet. We have had Jessica Freeborn here with us since the very beginning. I thank Principal Walter. Jessica was a wonderful choice. Jessica, I'm not sure you even missed a meeting unless it had something to do with school or MCAS or, we certainly spent the year hearing about what was happening at the high school. You were always excited. You shared stories about your own personal sophomore experience, and you certainly shared with all of your classmates. So I'm going to hand this over to you, but what I want to say to you is, we truly have appreciated you being a part of our school committee and what we'd like to do for you, and I'll have Principal Walter take care of this, is we'd like to have you go to your DECA store, pick out something very special, and we will treat you to something at the DECA store to, to remind you of your wonderful experience here with us. And, and again, so the floor is yours.
That's coming from the Bears' budget, by the way.
Well, thank you. It's very sweet. Well, I'm going to start off with a big congratulations to our wonderful concert choir. They have been selected by Boston's WROR 105.7 radio station as the winning choir of the "I Want to Know What Love Is" radio contest. Brockton High was one of three finalists in this competition. They will be singing backup for the British-American rock band Foreigner at their upcoming concert in Boston. Forty members of the concert choir were featured singing on the radio station Lauren and Wally's Show, Show on Wednesday, June 11. Oops. I'm trying. I'm a little, not my era. And this Thursday, June 19, is Foreigner's concert at the Blue Hills Pavilion in Boston. They will be singing backup as well as a 10-minute a cappella set. So it's very good news for our choir, choir. So congratulations. Okay, moving on. Last Friday, June 13, was our honor roll assembly at Brockton High for Term III. All honor roll students were invited to attend a talent show performed by all four houses. It was a fantastic talent show and one that all the students truly enjoyed. Everyone was dancing and singing, and it was something to see, that's for sure.
I think you saw it in the paper on Saturday morning.
I think so. Okay. This week as well as last, all IB and AP teachers have been meeting with their incoming students for next year's first summer assignments, so make sure you get your summer assignments. This week is final week, so students are busy preparing for finals this week, so study hard, everyone. Good luck. So today was the DECA competition, speaking of DECA, where the DECA students as well as the students who work in the restaurant competed on selling baked goods that they had made to see how well they'd worked together. So that was very cool to see. I served lunch, so I went out and bought a cookie, and it was really cool to see how hard the kids were working on selling, and everyone was so happy, and it was great. See all the kids really excited about that. And, let's see. Elections for class of 2016 and 2017 will be held in September, so all those who are looking to run, better wait until September, but good luck. And, okay, lastly, I'd like to thank Mayor Carpenter and Superintendent Smith and the entire school committee for allowing me to have this opportunity to sit here as the student representative and get to share with you every other week about everything that's happening at Brockton High. It's been an amazing experience getting to sit here and meet all of you, and just thank you.
Thank you. Jessica, you have big little shoes to fill, so. We look forward, and you bring up a couple of great things. I did have the opportunity to go and to see our Brockton High staff, you know, treat your honor roll students, and I loved, I guess when I say your honor roll students, that place was filled. So what does that say about our students? And to look-- And to look at the staff entertaining, kind of, you know, letting their hair down, so to say. There were some, really some truly talented faculty members dancing, the kids were excited. The finale of your own students on the stage with Mr. McCrina doing his tribute to the Beatles with Hey Jude, with, you know, kids up dancing in the aisles, singing, everybody behaving. It was just terrific, and I thank you for all those opportunities that you bring to the students. And again, you know, just makes Brockton High the place that you want to be. I also want to mention, you bring up our Fine Arts Cafe. We had a wonderful luncheon the other day. Thank you to Melissa McLaughlin. All our interns were there. You heard us talking about it about a month ago, and they, again, treated us to a wonderful presentation, and again, thank you for, for everything that you do. So, very good.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Jessica.
Okay. I'd like to move on.
Ms. Sullivan, who?
Well, we've done the bar and sully, so we've got, got through a few things already. I would like to talk to you again about Park, and I will have to tell you that as I continue on, there continues to be communication from the Department of Education. But I told you that I would make a recommendation to you in your information packet last Friday. Information was presented to you about the, the Park, and again, this year, it will not be the field test that we experienced this previous year. So what they have put out to districts is, starting, actually, I believe it was the 14th of May or June, I think May was when we were able to start to decide. Districts have been able to report to the district what their plan is for this coming year. You do have an opportunity, once you make your decision, there are some things that you can go back and forth on as far as the paper and pencil or using our computer programs. But my recommendation to you is, as we go forward, I'm recommending for this coming year, that instead of taking MCAS, it will not be both, other than in the areas that I'll talk about. I am recommending that we do take the Park as our accountability assessment for this coming year. That being said, that we would like to be able to send that information to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education by June 30. We want to make sure we get it in before that date to make sure that if we choose to do Park, we are one that would be selected. There is talk out there that if you don't get it in in a timely fashion, you will continue to take MCAS and not have the opportunity. We think, again, that we keep talking about a new generation of assessments, and whether the DESC or our Department of Education, our Board of Education decides to go with Park or MCAS, the decision they'll make in the next couple of years, it is going to change. It is going to be a new generation of assessment, whether it is MCAS or Park. By looking at the Park assessment, we're truly looking at the ability to look at our capability and our capacity with doing online assessments. And regardless of all that, it is never going to be MCAS as we have known it because we have changed and are changing to the Common Core. So regardless, there will be changes in the type of testing. Another thing that is attractive to us at this point, if you do take Park, you will be held harmless as far as your accountability standards. While I am very, very proud of being the only urban district to remain a Level 3 district, there are concerns that we have. We're trying to support a number of our schools. I shared that information with you this past winter as we go forward, and especially with some concerns about the budget. I think this gives us a little bit of breathing room. We will continue to work as hard as we can, and the good news is, if our accountability status were to move up, they would allow for that. It's that you would not move down, you would not move into, and it doesn't protect us for this year. I don't want to be misleading. It will for next year for our accountability status for our reporting. I do want to say to you that in grades 5, 8 in high school for the MCAS science, there is right now no Park test for that, so we would remain doing MCAS. For our students in grade 10, they will continue to participate in ELA and Math MCAS through 2018 for their competency determination. That will not change until we get a directive from the DESC. But again, it is clear that MCAS, as we have known it, will cease to exist as we move into the next couple of years. I think it gives our students an opportunity, and again, whether we go with paper and pencil or we felt very good about what you did this year with the Hancock and the Raymond School in going through the field testing. Dan Vigent, our curriculum staff, supported the Park field testing. We were able to outfit that schools with additional, I'm trying to think what they were called. I'm going to say laptops, tablets. So again, we want to continue to be able to try to do that throughout the district, maybe next year try to pick another site, and we'll continue to do that as we've cut $2 million from our technology budget. We will look for ways to be able to find additional resources to move our district forward. So again, my recommendation is that we go with the Park field, Park testing for next year.
Do you need a vote on that tonight?
I would like to be able to get that information by June 30.
Yeah. Mrs. Joyce?
With the new Common Core standards, the Park is aligned with those standards, correct?
Yes.
Whereas the MCAS, is the MCAS moving towards the Common Core or is that pretty much staying? Is there going to be a disconnect now?
I'm not sure if you're seeing changes. Now, looking out at some of the principles, I know that just went through. Deputy Superintendent, do you want to speak to that? Dr. Cancel, can you come down here if we have any questions?
Because if we're, if we're moving, if we've moved to the Common Core in, in our curriculum, it stands to reason that we would use the assessment that most effectively aligns with those standards, correct?
Right. And, and as Superintendent Smith said, MCAS will change. So whether we're talking about Park or another test, we're talking about an assessment that will measure our students' progress on Common Core, which is college and career readiness, which is a limitation of the current MCAS test, yes.
Right.
Do you feel that this will give us a leg up, so to speak, when we are held accountable?
Absolutely. Because the test is made for the Common Core, and it is theoretically possible that the state board will choose a different assessment. It is, it is made for the Common Core now. Our current MCAS is shifting towards the Common Core, but it's not there yet. And so it's a great opportunity for us to familiarize ourselves, our students and our teachers, with what the new assessment is going to be. It really is a different sort of assessment, and, and that's, that is a great advantage.
That makes it even more critical that we, going forward in, in future budget cycles, and we had Dan at one of our finance meetings, that we really have to make technology, well, bringing our technology up to par, a priority going forward. I think, you know, we'll, we'll struggle along this year, but next year, you know, we're going to be falling off that cliff pretty soon if we don't start--
Absolutely. We, we still have the option, there's a three-year contract with the state and their, the contractor who does the test, to provide a paper and pencil test. They cannot guarantee you, which is why we have the impetus to hurry up and get the application in. But you're absolutely right. The future is online testing, and it is absolutely a skill. And any skill, the more you practice it, the better you get, and that, that is simply the future. They can, they can keep, you know, sort of grandfathering in for a couple more years, but we know where the future is, and you're 100% right.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Not just that, Mrs. Joyce, you bring up a good point. When we were talking about the legislators coming together and looking at the funding of this budget, which is truly inequitable to our students. When you look at something like Park coming in, that obviously will be one of the things when we get the opportunity to, to speak with the delegations, that we start talking about what, what is happening to our children, not having the opportunities that, that other wealthy districts have for, for moving forward with Park.
Mr. Henningson?
Hi. Hi.
A few questions. Park. Twenty, I believe 23 states originally adopted Park. It went down to 19. It then went down to nine. This is concerning of why 23 went to nine and, and why it continues to go down. Do you have a sense of other states not adopting this set of standards? Because it seems this is dropping off, and the support for this testing seems to be waning. Right. It's, just to clarify, I, I will not speak for other states' decisions, but it's not that they're not adopting the standards, it's the assessment itself that they're concerned about. I will say, again, I'm not talking for any other state's decision, but in Massachusetts, we regularly rank at the top. This is a very challenging assessment. There are many other states where they have very high rates of proficiencies because every state was allowed to pick their own level of proficiency. If we in Massachusetts are concerned about our students scoring proficient, imagine what a state that has had a standard down here, what they're going to do compared to everybody else on a real level playing field. They're going to be faced with 95% not proficient. That's politically unacceptable. Again, I'm not speaking for any other state, but I do know that that's a reality of this test. I'm not defending this test, I'm not espousing this test, but that is just part of the reality that people are facing. What is the amount of time a child spends on MCAS versus the amount of time a child will spend on the Park test? My understanding is it could be almost double in terms of testing time.
I think that it depends on, you know, one, one point of clarification that we should make is that we have the option right now to go all paper in Brockton, and that option will reduce because the paper test is actually more expensive than the online test. We're hoping to get a couple of sites online, but that would have to be something that we would have to talk to Dan Vigent about, and, and really look at it and look at the numbers. I will say that just having seen students participate in the online assessment, there does seem to be less time involved, and that's something that would be a consideration. There are, there is a performance-based assessment, and then there's also an end-of-year assessment for Park, and so they do have those two components. But as far as duration and timelines, I think we would just have to get back to you with a comparison. This is what MCAS looks like, and this is what Park looks like.
Okay. And on, on that testing, so recently there was a Globe article that mentioned that most school districts lack the technical resources to, to take this test. So I guess I question, you know, if we're going to go back to paper and pencil and we're not going to adopt a 21st century testing mechanism, then why make this change now again? And why not wait? On that, you know, a PBD school district just went against this and went to MCAS. Medford approved the Park test, then went back and then approved the change. So, you know, more and more school districts are looking at this, and I'm, I'm concerned about the testing. The other thing that I also hear is that we're held, you know, not accountable, but my understanding is teachers are still held accountable, correct? Well, it's, it's not, it's not that we're not accountable, we're held harmless, and that's because they haven't fully figured out the equivalency of the tests. And so they're going to do their best, they're going to give a good estimate, and they will say, this is how you did in Park, that will be real. But how Park exactly equates to MCAS is going to be difficult with one year of, of real data. So that's why, from an accountability perspective, we'll be held harmless. There will be no penalty accruing to us for how we do in Park. It's also very common when you give a test that in the beginning, until you sort of get acclimated to the test, until the, the test really performs as it's supposed to, the first year, usually you don't perform as well because none of, nothing is really set. So that's the first thing. There is absolutely, you are held accountable, but you're held harmless. The scores count, but you're held harmless. You can only do better, you can't do worse. So that's to sort of incentivize the district in taking a chance in something new. And again, I cannot speak to why another community would choose or would not choose to take Park, but what I can say is, we've had lengthy discussions, this is an assessment of the Common Core, and that, those are the curriculum frameworks that we've chosen as a state to adopt. And that, those are the curriculum frameworks that we've chosen as a state to adopt. It is an assessment that is designed for that. And more importantly, for graduating students or seniors, this is an assessment that ensures if you, if you achieve at the high levels, you are college and career ready, meaning you are certified that you do not have to take any remedial courses if you score appropriately on this test. That is a very, very big incentive, and it's a very big impetus for a district, because the student loans are crushing. And to take a, a non-credit-bearing course in college with that sort of, you know, cost, it's just irresponsible. So, we've been really, we've, we've thought very hard about it. It measures the Common Core. And there, there is accountability, but as I said, we're held harmless. Did I get, because you had a question, but it had many questions in it, so I wanna make sure I got them.
I think you were asking about accountability of the teachers. And if there's one thing that, right now, as districts, we have discretion on, is we would be able to determine what that accountability would look like, and we would take things into account, like, this is the first time the kids are taking a test like this, this is the first time that the adults are actually administering a test like this. And we would have to, those would have implications for the extent to which we would hold any teacher accountable for the student results. We would just have to be very logical and thoughtful about that.
And one last question, just kind of a sidebar, just a point of information, I guess. The Abigail Adams scholarships, how does that work? Does this work? If, if we adopt that, how does this work?
Great question. I think because it was so complicated, what they really, they wanted to make sure the high-stake test, the high school test is a high stake. That actually is going to remain MCAS for the next couple of years. So until everything shakes out, until the students are really familiar with the Park, until the test starts to perform regularly and consistently, they're not going to make it at the high school level. So they continue to take MCAS. So that was a great question. That was exactly where you want to ask the question. What about, you know, our students at the high school level? So.
All right, thank you.
You know, we have been watching other districts. One of the things that superintendents do is we let each other know, you know, what we're recommending. So I won't even say it's a 50-50 split. I think it's more Park than MCAS. I mean, we did watch that. There were some districts, districts that chose MCAS, there were many others that chose Park. You know, I can try to get you, you know, I don't know how accurate it will be, but you're right, there are the districts that have chosen to stay with MCAS.
It seems that we are more, it's not so much the small districts either. I mean, PBD is not a small district. And, you know, Medford's not a small district.
There seems to be no rhyme or reason. Some Urbans have, have chosen Park, others have chosen MCAS. I think it really has to do with, you know, your decisions. We've talked long and hard about that, and for our reasons, some of I shared with you this evening is my recommendation for Park.
Thank you.
Mr. Jordan?
A couple of questions. One is, is there any provisions for families, parents in particular, to be either exposed or oriented to this newer system, so that they can help their children to, at home?
Yeah. I mean, and if, if we are to move forward with this decision, obviously, we have a deadline to meet with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. But part of the early decision would allow us to, to really think about outreach. What has been released recently are what they're calling prototypes or blueprints, which are actual Park questions. And those would be the kinds of things, most schools do MCAS nights and things like that. We would be exposing families to what the test actually looks like at each grade level, and the kinds of questions that students will be asked to do. And making the decision will allow us to really come up with a plan that focuses on families and community, so that they can get to know the test.
Yeah, I think with that, given the types of folks that live in our community, from the very top to the very bottom, a lot of families are working two, three jobs in the time that they have available. We might have to be way out of the box on their availability to come in, and when we're providing some of this. Another question I have, I've heard that there is time involved with some of the questions, especially like in English, and you're on a computer. And I'm wondering if all of our children would be able to type within that time limit, and also compose whatever they need to, to answer. If they were writing it, it may be easier in some cases, as opposed to trying to do both. And I think even some of the folks in the audience might have that problem, if you're not used to using computers on a regular basis.
Yeah, it's a very, it's a very good question, and that's one of the reasons why we think it's so important to start the testing as soon as possible, because it is the wave of the future. And so, if our students get used in third grade to doing this sort of assessment, by the time it starts to count in high school and then in college, or in the career they go into, we see that as a big advantage. And you're absolutely right. One of the things that, it's, it's very difficult to give up something that you're used to. And so, the idea of training and, and practice questions, that's great. And MCAS has a big history, a big backlog of that, and we're pretty expert in MCAS prep. The problem is, this test is brand-new, the Park test, and so they are, they were trying to build the airplane as they were flying it. So they were very slow to release all of these sorts of, I would call them supports, but they were very slow to release them. But that is going to happen. In a lot of cases, we were field testing them right now. So they, they weren't even a final question. So you can't release a question until you know, is this really a Park question or not? But it's an excellent point, and you're gonna see us really gear up in the future. How do we make sure that our teachers are comfortable and expert in the Park? How do we make sure our parents are? And I'm sure that we will be just as successful as we were with MCAS. But I will point this out to everyone, because this is when I started in my career in education in Massachusetts, right when MCAS hit. And in the beginning, there were stumbling blocks, and there was a lot of learning. The curve was very steep. But we really did become quite good at it. It's gonna be, it's going to be different, it's a different sort of test, but it's the right move, and we are looking in the long-term direction.
Last question would be, what was mentioned earlier, the hardware involved with this. Probably needing almost one and a half, or whatever, amount of tablets or whatever we're using, simply because children do lose them or may break them. Families, a lot of our families do not have the resources to either have that at home or to replace something like that. So consideration to making sure, if we do accept that, that we do have enough money to have all this in place, so that no child is left behind, again, because of the lack of the ability to have tablet, and even having one replaced, stolen, whatever the situation may be.
Yeah, that's a great point, and that's, I think, one of the reasons why Mrs. Joyce brought up the technology investment. But the good news about this coming, the year that we're talking about, the proposed year coming up, we are not obligated to do online. So we can still do paper and pencil. We may choose to do some online, some schools online, some schools paper and pencil, that's a district decision. In the future, that may not occur. But that's why we have to start familiarizing all of our students with the technology and the tablets, as you say. So that's, we do have a little bit of room in terms of time, but that's definitely a concern going down, down the road.
Last piece with that, if there is homework with this, not every family, again, is online. They may have equipment, but because of, unless, unless the economy changes, they may not have active online. So that's something else we have to look at as a, as a major concern.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Superintendent Smith said that in grades five, eight, and 10, they still take the MCAS. Would they take the Park, too? In those grades?
Well, it would be science MCAS.
Oh, just the science?
Right. So they would, they would have the same number of subjects, it's just that they would take the science MCAS and the Park ELLA and the Park Math.
Park does not have a science test, as of yet.
Okay.
Ms. Clark?
I actually have unique experience of being the first class that had to take MCAS. And I know that when I got to college, one of the first things, English first day, teacher told us to put aside everything we learned for MCAS, it was no longer applicable here. So, my concern is with the Park, is moving to the Park standard, those standards, because we're teaching to the core curriculum, more applicable in the college setting, are we gonna end up with the same situation as MCAS if we're teaching, you know, towards that test with that curriculum? Are we gonna end up with that same type of idea of, okay, put this aside now? Or is it going to be broader?
Higher ed has been supported.
Yeah, higher education is actually at the table in the test development. So, part of that is speaking to the lag time, and them actually testing questions and making sure that questions are rigorous enough to meet our MCAS standards, because we do have a high standard. But now more than ever, I think that the kinds of tasks that students are asked to do in college are incrementally represented in the Park test. So it's that real connection to college and career readiness that they're looking for.
What would you see as the top three issues in implementing the Park test, or if they are over MCAS? I know technology is probably up there, but...
Sure. It's new. I mean, it is new. And that, that had a whole host of issues. It was also a field test. They didn't have all the supports in place. So when you would call up for something simple, like a student hit a poorly-designed button, which was right next to the button they should have hit, instead of just being able to reset them, you had to call up, and the first time we made the call, they said, "Well, we're sorry, but we don't have permission to reset the child. I'll escalate this call, and they'll get back to you in 24 hours." Well, the kid's right there, taking the test, 24 hours isn't... So that, but that was a beginning, you know, field test sort of bump that they're running through. So there were technological challenges. There were other design aspects of the test. Again, it was almost, it's in a beta version, they were really rushing to get it out. And so, we believe that they will get better at those sorts of things. That there were, quite frankly, boxes to fill in a, an essay, which was essentially a long composition. You give a student a box this big, they write for that much. It doesn't matter if it's the meaning of the world, that's what they're writing in. So there were just little design issues. I call them little, they're actually major, but there were design issues that should clean up as the test becomes more sophisticated. Luckily, it was a field test. It was to see how the test will perform when real-life students take it. And so, those, those were really the challenges.
And I also would just say, too, that, I mean, we're responsible for making sure that when students actually sit down, and when it does become time for them to take the test online, and that will eventually be where we are, that they actually have those technology readiness skills that we've taught them, so that they're not sitting down and being, you know, stumbling on that. It's, it's a content test, it can't be a test with how well they can manipulate a computer. And we were stressing a little bit when we were watching the kids take the field test, and I was amazed at how much they could do. I think the adults tend to struggle more than the kids. And what we thought wasn't very intuitive, the kids were zipping right through. So it's, I think it's an issue that we have, too. But it is something that we need to continually work on, because if we go to paper and pencil, we still need to focus on technology, we still need to make sure that we have kids exposed to technology, those readiness skills, and the adults, too. Because the adults can't adequately teach them unless they're adept themselves. So those are our bigger challenges, I think.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion and a vote? So I believe the superintendent is looking for a vote on her recommendation tonight here from the school committee. So I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adopt superintendent's recommendation.
Okay. Okay, motion is promptly made in second. Any further discussion of the motion? All in favor? Opposed? Six to one. So it is approved.
And we will keep you updated. As I said, there's information that continues to come in. I'll give you a regular update as we start to get ready for instruction next year, our testing, our technology updates, and we'll continue to see how this unfolds.
Okay.
Okay, I also want to share with the school committee, we've been in the middle of so many budget decisions, I think some things get lost as we talk. So I want to talk a little bit about my executive directors. And I'm talking in particular about June Saber and Cliff Murray, who, had I not had them here during budget season, just having that perspective from the middle schools with Dr. Murray, June Saber with our elementary schools, it certainly added to the discussion, and I think we made better decisions, as difficult as they were, with having them there. So I just want to be clear, that as we move forward, I have every confidence, and whether I feel this is educationally sound, it's, it's not what I want to do, but they will be the principals of their schools, their schools that are moving in the right direction. I've been in the schools a number of times, the leadership is exceptional, which is why they have been promoted to executive directors. Unfortunately, they will continue to be straddling right now two jobs. I'm gonna be working with Deputy Superintendent Barry to talk about, again, them supporting our leadership team as executive directors, making sure I have those perspectives of middle school, elementary. You know, June Saber will be overseeing our elementary principals and our coordinators that will come under her. And Dr. Murray will continue to support our middle school principals, et cetera. And they will be under the direction of Liz Barry, your Deputy Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. So with all of the talk, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, and I'm not sure if you have any questions about that.
I don't see any.
Okay, and I think I'll wait till we get into the budget to, to continue.
How about, we've got, before we get to the budget, items to refer to subcommittee? Is there a quest by any members of the school committee to refer a specific item to one of our standing subcommittees? Superintendent? No?
I'll just comment on one thing with respect to the superintendent's evaluation, and that has been postponed temporarily, because we have been doing nothing but concentrating on the budget. So I did speak with Mr. Lennox, who forwarded me some paperwork with respect to extending our contractual obligation. So I'll, I will talk to our superintendent, Mr. Lennox, and then share with the rest of the committee the details as they become, as they become relevant, so. You have some time to fit this in, too?
Okay. Again, many of you were here, all of you, of course, were here for the finance meeting. Everyone pretty much understands where we are. I do want to make a couple of comments. The mayor and I have had lengthy conversations about the budget. I just want to make it very, very clear that, you know, I find this a very difficult budget. We will do whatever we can to continue to move the district forward. But the mayor has shared with me today, and it truly was something that I hadn't seen, that there was a poll out there. And there is a poll that talks about, you know, people not wanting taxes to go up in Brockton. I don't think any of us want taxes to go up in Brockton. But again, I make it very, very clear that although it was overwhelming for, for people that were in support of no new taxes, and again, I'm saying this as your superintendent, I'm saying this as a resident of Brockton, I really think when you look at that amount of money, and it didn't matter when I moved here 30 years ago and worked two and three jobs to basically make the mortgage, like many people out there, that it was probably for the average household, $100. When I look at the pain and, you know, taking away of programs, you know, laying off over 100 staff members, trying to rob Peter to pay Paul to bring programs back, I'm not sure this is, is the best decision. I feel that this will have impact on our district for years to come. I'm not gonna sit here tonight, we'll continue to, to look at the budget, I will continue to give you updates on, on some of the effects. But I will say one thing, because as far as, and the mayor will address for you, I think, some information that was out there, I'll let him to speak to that. But when you look at the additional money that did come into the district, and the mayor is correct in telling you, that over $3 million additional dollars came into the district, and the way of looking at the funding of the schools was nothing that had changed over the past number of years in how we fund schools. But that being said, one of the things I want to say to everybody is, Brockton has a formula that they have to meet. 80% of the budget is provided by the state, 20% is provided by the city. In other cities and towns, many times, there is additional money on top of that foundation budget. We are not a wealthy community, but this time here has been exceptionally harsh in that there was basically not another dollar on the foundation formula added to the budget. And that being said, when you look at, and this is a problem with the formula that we will address... will address, when you look at the Barrett Russell School, so we brought that on last April through the summer. 300 youngsters entered school there this past September. We spent over $1.5 million out of our money to bring that online. So when you look at an increase of 3.6 or whatever it is, and you start to subtract a whole new building with a principal, with a nurse, with a custodian, with materials, with supplies, with all of those things, it becomes very difficult with that kind of an increase to continue to run the school district when you take into account, and there were some things we talked about, the loss of race to the top, step raises, increases in heating and oil. And the only way that I can compare that is when I look at a family. So you go from being a family of four to a family of eight. I don't see that as an increase. You know, you have increased costs at that point. It's not extra dollars, is my point. It's not extra dollars to run the district. There were other things that we had to support, and basically, they're children. And I've talked about, you know, the number of additional children we had come into the district, and that's where the additional money came from the state to support those children. So we have some difficulties. I keep saying publicly that we will fight for every dollar. I guarantee you, I will work with the mayor, and we'll continue to try to identify funds, identify, I'm not sure where. You hear me talk about grants. And the other thing that I would like to mention to the school committee around budget is one of the questions came to me about, didn't we see this coming? So what I'm saying to you is, this has been, I can't even tell you the education this has been, looking at every single item in this budget, as I know you have done during this budget season. But what I would like to do also, I spoke to the mayor about it today, I spoke to Jay Condon, I would like to bring in a neutral CPA to take a look at our budget, to compare it to possibly other urban districts. And that becomes difficult sometimes, it's apples to oranges. But it allows us to identify monies that come into the district, whether it's monies that come into the general fund for our homeless children. Whatever those monies are, I want to make sure that we understand those monies that come in, and, you know, whether legally they come into a general fund, I would like to be able to say to the mayor that these are funds that would like to come over to the school district, and those are the kind of things that I think will help us to have somebody neutral come in, look at our budget, look at our spending. This conversation's out there about where we have too many administrators. I'm telling you differently. I'm looking at the mandates, I'm looking at accountability. You know, I stand behind those appointments. And we can look at every single administrator in the district, and if people aren't doing their job, that's my job to make sure that they are. So I'd like your permission to start to take a look at bringing in somebody neutral to look at our budget, our spending, and to look at monies that come into our city and our district.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. Mr. Minicella?
I don't have a problem with that, but I'd like to figure out what the cost would be. And I want to do that after we settle into our budget, you know. So I think that's a conversation for July, you know, in our school committee meeting in July. One of the things that I know that we discussed is that we were going to get some data. I think this is part of what you just said about where we're at, comparing ourselves to other urban districts in terms of percentage of administrators, you know, numbers. So that can be part and parcel of this, you know, comparing us to Springfield and Worcester. And we're not Boston, but you can, we can still look at the number and see what their percentage of administrators is to certified staff and that sort of thing. You know, Lynn Lowell, Lawrence, those types of communities, you know, we'll see where we stand with the rest of them in terms of the proportionality of administrative, administrators via staff. Chiefs versus Indians, as they say, you know, so...
Mr. Hennigson?
Just a quick question, a couple of quick questions to yourself, Mr. Mayor. So with regards to not increasing taxes, so clearly there is a...
Yes, you want to give me a chance to address, and then you can respond after that?
Yeah.
All right. Because I think you're going to ask me some things that I'm just going to say anyhow.
Well, obviously, there's not a lot of wanting to increase taxes. And I understand the residents, you know, I'm a resident, too. I don't like paying any more taxes. And, you know, to piggyback on what Superintendent Smith said, you know, the cuts that we're experiencing are just so deep. And, you know, I guess the question I would have, basically, to the superintendent and yourself, is that, you know, one of the things I've read about on Beacon Hill, for instance, is that there's talk on the Hill of expanding charter schools. And my understanding of if they expand charter schools, then more money will come out of the district, and we'll be forced to pay even more money to those schools, which will put us in a bigger problem in years to come. And not only are we dealing with this problem now, but, you know, we have to think next year, three, five years down the line, of where we're going to be. We've been lucky in some respects that we've had years, we've had flush cash, whatever. But it doesn't seem like we're at that point anymore. We're getting more and more unfunded mandates. So I guess the question to you, and you can respond, is, you know, how do we plan to address this next year? You know, if we don't have another tax increase, then we're going to be faced with the same shortfall. If we don't have the same funding mechanism, we're going to be down the same road next year. And I personally don't want to go through this next year, because we can't keep hiring and going back and forth. There's only so much cuts we could do, and I think we've really cut down as far as we can cut.
True. So let me talk about some of this stuff. So first of all, I think there's a little bit of a problem with your premise that my reluctance in seeking a property tax relief is preventing us from being able to balance the school budget.
No, I don't mean that.
So, but let me lay it all out. So first of all, you know, I think it's important for people to know that the superintendent and I agree on a lot more than we disagree on. And, you know, we do disagree on this one issue as to whether I should have sought a property tax increase or not. But I think we agree and have worked together on a lot of items, and in spite of our difference of opinion on that one issue, it's not preventing us from both trying to work together to do the best we can for the school system. I think that when the superintendent references the amount of the city contribution as compared to some other communities, it's a skewed number, because as Mr. Condon explained at a prior meeting, the city of Brockton is one of only about 100 communities in the Commonwealth that are not allowed to count the city's payment for school department retiree health insurance as part of the contribution to the city, to the school department budget. Over 200 communities in Massachusetts are allowed to count that money. Last year, that number was $8 million. That's an additional $8 million payment from the city side that's not reflected on the school budget. And if we were able to count that $8 million, we would be above the median of Massachusetts communities in terms of the contribution by the city side. I do appreciate the superintendent's comments that the school funding from the city side, the local funding, was calculated the exact same methodology that's been used every year. We've had the same CFO for 24 years. It's the same methodology that's been used every year. It did result in a $3.6 million increase in the amount coming over. And I'll be the first one to agree that the needs exceed that. But I don't, my reasoning to answer your original question, this notion that I can just raise property taxes, which would yield about $2.5 million this year if I asked the city council for a maximum tax increase. There's this misconception out there that that money would just automatically come over to the schools. That's not the case. When we were balancing the city side of the budget and the other city departments, I made $3 million in cuts on the city side to balance the budget. I would be obligated to try to restore some of those cuts, particularly with, as an example, with the firefighters. I received a concession from the firefighters' union of about a half a million dollars to help balance this year's budget. The second any additional money comes in, that deal is off, and I'd have to restore that half a million. So that's half a million right off the top to firefighter positions that I would have to fill. And then among the other city departments, they have been cut consistently over the last seven or eight years. And there are many city departments that only have about half the staffing that they had seven or eight years ago. So as the mayor, if this $2.5 million did come in, I would have to disperse that fairly amongst all the city departments and do the best I could to distribute it fairly. So, I mean, I think out of that $2.5 million, it's probably about a million of that that comes over to the school budget. And I don't think a million fixes the problem. And I don't think it fixes any of the issues towards next year and the year after. So, you know, I have committed with the superintendent to work on trying to get a lot of the inequities addressed on the state level particularly that are causing the problem. I mean, the Chapter 70 formula does not work. A gateway city with a rapidly exploding student population, we're being short-changed. The superintendent mentioned the issue of the burden that homeless children, you know, carry to our school system. And we embrace those kids with open arms, but they, but they cost us a lot more money than the surrounding communities have to pay. And this issue of, you know, Brockton hotels being used as homeless shelters, and then all of these kids coming into the school system, and then they get placed outside of Brockton, and we now have to continue to provide transportation. So, I mean, we've got, you know, 8,000 or 9,000 Brockton kids walking to school while we're sending vans to New Bedford and Fall River and Taunton and all kinds of other places to give door-to-door transportation to children that spend some time in a Brockton hotel. So, I mean, there are a lot of inequities here that have to be addressed. And I think that the school committee, myself, the superintendent, the legislative delegation, you know, we're all going to work very hard. I met with the Taunton mayor yesterday, and Bridgewater State University is going to facilitate some cooperation between the southeastern Massachusetts mayors. So New Bedford and Fall River and Taunton and myself, we're going to form an alliance and try to work together on issues that affect all of our cities. And I see the funding of education in gateway cities as being right at the top of my list, along with, you know, drug addiction, some other issues that are plaguing all of our cities. So it's, it's easy to say, yeah, you could go raise $2.5 million in taxes, that solves all our problems. It's probably a million net to the schools, and I don't think it fixes the problem. However, I also remind everyone that when, in a couple of our previous meetings, I made the commitment to the superintendent that once the city budget was approved, it gets its final approval next Monday, but it received a favorable recommendation the other night, that the CFO and I would roll up our sleeves and try to identify any additional sources of revenue that we can put our hands on this year and get it over to the school side. So we're prepared to do that, and we've done that. And I want to, you know, put several things on the table for you tonight. First of all, we've identified $140,000 that we have available to restore middle school intramural sports and freshman sports at the high school. $40,000 for freshman sports, $100,000 for intramural sports at the middle school level. All that requires is for you tonight to pass a formal resolution asking me to appropriate that money, and I will file with the city council to request that that appropriation be approved. I believe that fully funds freshman sports. It does not quite fully fund middle school sports, but it puts a majority of that...
School sports or...
Middle school intramurals. I'm sorry, middle school intramurals. Let me be clear. Middle school intramurals. But it puts enough of it back that the intramurals could continue, probably scale down a little bit. So that would be $140,000 of immediate assistance I will bring forward to the city council if you ask me to do that tonight for that reason. We also have the issue of the, one of the very difficult decisions and very painful cuts that you've made at this point is choosing to no longer fund the three school resource I think that's a critical need. I think it's a critical age group. I think we've got three great Brockton police officers that work in those six schools right now, and I do not want to see those officers go away. So I can tell you tonight that I have decided that for one year, the city will pick up 100% of the cost of those officers and restore that $125,000 from the city side. We will redeploy those officers in July and August while the schools are closed. I'm guaranteeing you that they will be back in place on the first day of school, and they will remain there just as they always do each year, and we'll just agree to revisit it a year from now when we see how our respective budgets work. But I will make the commitment for a year to carry that cost. That's $125,000 from the city side. We've also identified the ability that I can reimburse the school budget for the cost of the teacher at the high school that teaches the television courses and the cost of operating the TV studio at the high school. I have a revolving fund from Cable Resources in the mayor's budget. I have discretion on it, and I can expend it towards cable-related activities. The vast majority of that money goes to BCA each year, but I do have some money available, and that's $101,000. So I will make a disbursement from that fund to the schools for $101,000 to reimburse the cost of that teacher and the cost of operating the TV studio. I will ask, and it's your decision, not mine, I would ask that you consider using that $101,000 to restore some non-certified positions, because I think the unintended effect of prioritizing teacher callbacks is I think the non-certified folks are now bearing a disproportionate amount of the pain in terms of the cuts that have been made. But that will be the school committee's decision. That's simply my request. Additionally, I think the superintendent and I do agree that there are some critical facility needs on the school side right now that have to be addressed. When we talk about school, school class size, it's not just teachers, it's classrooms. And we don't have enough of those either. And some of the ones we have are not in good condition. So we've received the good news recently that MSBA has given a preliminary approval to fund critical repair work at four Brockton schools. Roof spoilers and windows that vary in combinations at four different Brockton schools. It's about $10 million in necessary repairs that the state, if we go through the process and get the final approval, the state would pick up, and I'm using round numbers, please don't hold me right to the penny, but using round numbers, the state would pick up $8 million of the $10 million. The city would be obligated to come up with the other $2 million. It's a critical need. I think the first step in us looking forward as to how we develop more classrooms is we better hang on to the ones that we have right now. We can't afford to go backwards. And these repairs will add about 40 years to the useful life of those four schools. So I think that that is a critical need, and I'm going to have to go ask the city council for that $2 million. Additionally, on the, in terms of that MSBA program, the first requirement for us to gain an approval is for the city side to appropriate the cost of a feasibility study to do right away. And the city has to, has to commit to that, funding that feasibility study before August 3rd. We estimate that feasibility study will be about $130,000. When it's bid out, we'll get the final price. But earlier today, I did send a request to the city council to appropriate $130,000 to pay for that feasibility study so that we can be eligible for the MSBA program that I think is critical, critical. I think all the members of the school committee would agree with me that it would be a huge mistake to not take advantage of that repair program with the state paying 80 cents on the dollar. So I've sent that $130,000 request for an appropriation up to the city council earlier today. Looking at the, on the facility, getting back to the facilities for a second, 20% of that repair program would be $2 million. You've also heard discussed at meetings, we have a critical need for modular classrooms, repair and replacement in addition. I've been given an estimate of $750,000 for modular classrooms. We'll include that in the funding request from the city council. The superintendent and I also agree on the critical need for the school department to create a facilities master plan. It's something that the superintendent has talked about since the first day she came in. As the, in a previous life, as the former chair of the facilities subcommittee of this committee, I understand the need for that facilities master plan. The city of Brockton needs one new school right now, and we're going to need two before it takes very long, in my humble, unscientific opinion. Somewhere along the line, we're hopeful that a funding opportunity will come out from MSBA to support the construction of a new school. In order, if and when that day comes, we will not qualify for it if we do not have a facilities master plan. We have to have one to show the need and show what our existing facilities are and for, I mean, the superintendent could spend half an hour telling us why we need one, but the fact of the matter is, is we will not get funding for a new school down the road that we're going to need desperately if we don't have a facilities master plan. The cost of doing that plan is about $250,000. So let me give this to you total on the, on... On the capital needs side, which falls squarely on the city side of the budget, $2 million for our 20%, three-quarters of a million for modular classrooms, $250,000 for a facilities master plan. When you finalize and formalize that request to me, that will be about a $3 million appropriation that you'll be requesting, and I am committed to bringing that forward to the city council and lobbying for it and supporting it and doing the best I can to get it approved. And I do believe that ultimately will be approved by the city council because it's the right decision to make, and it's the necessary decision to make. But that will be an additional $3 million of funding coming from the city side. In the short run, in terms of trying to find every source of money I can to help you deal with the current operating deficit, $130,000 for a feasibility study, $140,000 for intramural and freshman sports, $125,000 to cover the cost of school resource officers this year, and $105,000 to reimburse, I said 101 earlier, I'm sorry, it's 105. $105,000 to reimburse the cost of the TV instructor in the TV studio at the high school, which then frees up that $105,000 for you to allocate. That's a total of half a million dollars in immediate upfront help towards the budget. I know it's not enough, but it's half a million that you didn't have an hour ago, and we're doing the best we can. We are working every day to try to identify any funds that we can, and it's a half a million dollars that will cover a couple of critical needs, and there's also some money there for you to disburse as you see fit, but I would ask you to keep the non-certified people in mind also. And the superintendent and I also had that conversation today, and I think we agree that, you know, there are some non-certified positions that are going to be critical to be recalled also. So, in order to, in order to, I've already requested the appropriation of the 130, the 125, and the 105, I can do unilaterally. In order to request the $140,000 of funding for the intramural and freshman sports, I do need a formal vote request from the school committee, and then I will send that request for an appropriation forward to the city council with my recommendation.
With respect to the 125 SROs, can we now incorporate that into our budget, pulling it out?
No, I use the available money, I've got cash on hand is for the sports. The 125, I'm keeping, I'm committing to keep those offices in. It's a Schedule 19 item, it'll be adjusted off the Schedule 19 at the end of the year. That does not create additional cash for you today, but it does replace the cash that was cut from the budget to fund those three SROs.
Okay.
If we did it the other way, Tom, then I wouldn't have the 140 for the sports. I'm trying to cover both. We're using every creative method we can to find some money to help.
So, Mayor, what you're saying on the 125 is we would see that in our budget next year, the 125?
Correct. At the end of the year, right, when we adjust the Schedule 19, there's 125 that was in there that comes out. We pay it, doesn't come from you, it's just the mechanism and how it comes, it's how it's funded. And so, folks know, in the past, it's been a 60-40 split where the city paid 60% of the cost of those officers, the school department paid 40%. You know, my offer for this year is that, for this upcoming year, the city will absorb 100% of the cost of those officers, and like a lot of other things we're discussing, it'll be back on the table for us to discuss a year from now when we see where we all stand. But I can commit to it for you. I think it's a critical, we've got to keep those police officers in those schools. We've got some great officers doing great work in those schools, and the middle school grades are just so essential in terms of us helping young people make good decisions.
And as far as the school resource officers, the mayor and I had conversation today, and like every cut, you know, there's not one person that I felt was expendable, and one of the things I commented on, when you look at our school police officers, they're dealing with, make no mistake about it, they're dealing with things happening in the schools on a daily basis, you know, they kind of keep the lid on. They support our principals, they're supporting our staff, making sure students can remain in school. And one of the comments that came back to me, and you're right, Mr. Mayor, the SROs are a critical part of what happens in our middle schools, and it allows our school police to focus on other areas in the district while they're there instructing, being part of the very fabric of our middle schools, they're also supporting those principals. So, I just want to say that publicly, that they have certainly been a big part of the Brockton public schools.
Mr. Minichella.
With respect to tonight, we obviously heard the request, with respect to my turn, is there any possibility of adding to that request to the city council?
I've given you all the money I have right now, and I, so, I mean, I'll make a comment about my turn because I'm a big believer in my turn. Many years ago, when I owned a small business in the city, I actually employed two different my turn students when they were high school students, so I've been a supporter of that program for a long time. There are a lot of programs I think we all support that have been cut in this budget. You know, I spent a good part of my life helping to get Independence Academy established, and the $50,000 funding for Independence Academy has been cut out of this budget too. So, I mean, I think we can go down the list, and there's not one program that has been cut that's not an important program. But right now, Tom, that's within $20,000 of the available money the city has, and the CFO will not do it to the very last penny, there has to be a little bit of a cushion there. But there's, you know, I'll entertain whatever you decide to ask me for an appropriation, but I'm trying to look at a couple of the things that haven't been addressed yet that are critical, that some money from the city side could help. And I'm also a big believer in middle school sports and freshman sports. I think losing freshman sports at the high school would be devastating to our athletic program, and I think middle school intramurals, students need a safe place to go after school too, and after-school programs are important also. But, you know, and that still doesn't fully restore, restores the majority of the middle school intramural funding, not quite all of it.
Mr. Henningson.
Thank you for yourself and Mr. Condon for sharpening your pencils, so to speak, and finding that addition.
And this will be an ongoing process over the summer, and we're all continuing to work, and I remember four years ago when I sat in your seat and we dealt with what was first a $13 million, and then it became a $10 million operating deficit, and these are all the same tough decisions, and as I recall, we kept working with the superintendent all summer trying to identify any additional funding sources and getting programs and people restored before the first day of school. So, I think that on both sides, we're going to be continuing to work every day to try to find money. This is the result of, since last week, the CFO and I trying to come up with every creative way we can get some help over to the school side.
And so, that $1,500 that you mentioned, and you're basically asking, we consider putting that into non-certified?
I can do that, you're right. I'm, it's not my decision, I'm just asking if you would consider that. I can allocate that, that particular cable fund is in the mayor's portion of the budget, so I can allocate that without council approval, so we'll go forward with that, and it creates $1,5000 for you.
So, if we were to reallocate that $1,500 to the paraprofessionals, for instance, about how many would that bring back?
Paraprofessionals, $1,500.
Bring back, I see, four.
Four. Okay.
Four or five.
All right, thank you.
Mrs. Joyce.
So, you need a request from us for the 140 only? Is that what you're going to be?
Yes, because the school resource officers, I've already made that decision and informed the police department. The money for the TV teacher in studio, I can also make that one unilaterally. The $130,000 for the feasibility study does require council approval, but I've already sent that up to the council earlier today because time was of the essence. And, so, right, the one appropriation here that we talked about that does require a request from you is regarding the $140,000 for middle school intramurals and freshman sports.
And you need us to request you to do what?
I just need you to request that, request the city make an appropriation of $140,000 to the school department in order to fund middle school intramurals and freshman sports.
Okay.
Because when I do bring that forward to the council, and I do believe it will get council support, but it has to be a specific request.
Well, those, those specific programs, as you know, were priorities of ours that we had set forth as well, so that's in line with the programs that we're looking, that we find to be critical, that we believe are critical, and that we're looking to re-establish anyway. So, that's appreciated, you know, that means a lot to a lot of these kids, and you're right, they need those programs after school, especially this age.
Right, and we're hearing from a lot of parents for a lot of reasons, but I have heard from a lot of parents specifically worried about the loss of, you know, middle school intramural sports and freshman sports at the high school.
Well, what I think is very critical about this is looking beyond this budget cycle and looking at our long-term needs, and this feasibility study, of course, is necessary if we're going to get the funding to repair our buildings to be able to obtain that funding from the state.
Based upon, Mr. Joyce, I've had, based upon the information I receive from the MSBA, if we do not appropriate that money before August 3rd, we're out.
And we went through that with the Green School, we had to appropriate that money as well.
Very similar.
But also that, the long-term master facilities plan and incorporating that, so, because we are going to have to build new schools, and that's the only way we're going to be able to take advantage of any future programs. So, to be able to see beyond this budget cycle is really critical for us, because we're going to have those challenges going forward. So, I'd like to put forth the approval to submit the request to city council to fund $140,000 for those specific, the freshman sports and the middle school intramural programs.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor, properly seconded. Any additional discussion on the motion?
You can add any more.
It'll go over what I can do. There's about $160-something thousand in identified available funds, and I'm told I can't spend it down to the last dollar. So, I mean, Tom, we're going to continue to look at this, and any money that's available, I'll continue to send it over. You know, I've managed to balance the city side budget, we'll live with the cuts we've made on the city side. I agree that the cuts are more, that the cuts are deeper and more painful on the school side right now, and so, any funds we can identify, we'll send them over. Some items require council approval because I request an appropriation, but the city council holds the checkbook and has to approve appropriations.
Okay.
Originally, the CFO told me I could only have 100, and I squeezed him up to 140, so, I'm doing the best I can.
We're moving in the right direction.
It's a help, it gets us one step closer. So, there's a motion on the floor, properly seconded, to request that the mayor request a $140,000 appropriation from the city council to fund middle school intramurals and freshman sports. $40,000 allocated to freshman sports, $100,000 allocated to middle school intramurals. All in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously, and I will get that filed with the city council. And I think that's, I think that's most of what I've got for tonight.
The only thing I want to finish with, I think it was critical when we presented before the city council, and it's why I mentioned to you July 21st, that we keep to get that message out there to the mayor, to the city council, that we're willing to work to identify ways to talk to our state legislators, to bring, as the mayor has said, mayor's superintendents together that are dealing with similar issues. And the thing I'm also going to share with you that is, on the Brockton Public School website, we will continue to make sure that we communicate with our parents, I'm calling it "support our schools." It'll be up there every day for them to see the cuts that we have made. As we take those cuts off, we'll let the parents know however we've made progress. There are partners in this, they have been supportive, they also have been very concerned. I've had messages, letters, phone calls, so that will be out there. The other thing that is very difficult to share with the public is, again, when we talk about bringing staff members back, you know, teachers in particular, and that's why I mentioned to you the superintendent's budget, I don't want you to forget that we mentioned in that budget additional positions that were not fluff, that were compliance, that were class size issues. So, the other thing that will be up on that website for all to see, and in a timely manner, will be class sizes. If you go to the Brookfield website, you'll be able to see the third grade class sizes. If they're 30, if they're 34, there'll be no, it's not just sitting here and saying the words, parents will be able to see what we're dealing with across the district for class sizes. And I thank the mayor, because the other piece on the website is when we look at our facilities, it is not time to back down. Our children deserve to be in safe schools, schools that are supportive, so I'm very, very pleased to hear about the hope that our city council will support our facility needs, our facility master plan, our modular classrooms at the Kennedy. And you heard me talk about the bus tour in the fall, where we invite our city council members, the mayor, our school committee, obviously, to go and take a look at some of the facilities we have concerns about. Because as I look at, and this is what a facility master plan will do, again, I agree that this will help certainly the life cycle when you're talking roofs and boilers and windows and all of those things. We'll continue to talk about the facilities on our website to, again, share with our school community the needs that we have. So, thank you for supporting our facility needs for students.
And so, superintendent, you know, as soon as you and the team in the school committee formalize that request with the specific numbers, I will immediately, you know, get it, file it with the city council, and, but it is, give or take a few dollars, it's going to be about $3 million in order to fund those facilities programs. So, you know, I'm making a commitment to you tonight, we're $3.5 million subject to city council approval.
Mr. Jordan.
Okay, since you said as the executive member for all the boards and commissions, excuse me, would you consider to some of these boards and commissions, when they're looking at large tracts of land?
Really? I said as executive on all those committees, really?
Yeah, you do. That at some point, if we're building, we'll need to build two schools, that we still would have that property at some point to do that?
So, Mr. Jordan, you'll be pleased to know that that's already been underway, so as we've been going through this program of the assessors' office, working with the treasurer's office to identify potential, to identify tax title properties that the city has acquired that we're now beginning to auction off to raise revenue, they have the standard marching orders to, you know, any parcels that look like they may be large enough to build a school on, will be set aside, and, you know, we'll share that with the school committee, and if we think, if after review it's a potential site for a school, we'll absolutely sit on it and hold it. So, we're already looking for that, and it's not easy, because in a city like Brockton that's completely developed, there are not a lot of large parcels.
Thank you.
We have actually identified one, we've begun a review of. The problem is it's on the extreme north side of the city, and our, you know, our most critical need for classrooms is on the south side of the city, but we are, that process is going on, Mr. Jordan, and we, all the folks that are looking and reviewing all these properties do have the instructions that any parcel, whether it has a building on it or not, if it's potentially large enough to build a school on, it's going to be set aside for further review.
What?
And if it was determined to be suitable, we would hold it.
What, six, to welcome any students from anybody?
Duly noted, Mr. Jordan. Okay, do you have anything else on this? Okay, I'm all set too. So, at this point, under new business, Mr. Minichella, do you have a report?
We have the report of the June 11th meeting of the finance subcommittee. The committee met at 6:30 over at the Arnoen School. Some of the items discussed were the Medicaid reimbursement service provider. At that point, we discussed whether to give credence to a company, New England Medical Billing, who was contesting the awarding of the bid to PCG, who complied with procurement laws and was awarded that bid through the bid review subcommittee meeting, and at that time, we voted not to reconsider that request due to the adherence to the law. We also discussed the mayor's request for the funding that was previously mentioned with regard to that Chartwell's outreach account, and that was tabled for further discussion this evening, and you saw the result of that. We also had discussion with respect to the budget. We identified additional cuts. We actually brought the budget into balance, but we requested further information with respect to the grants and the discussions that took place earlier at the finance respect to the grants and the discussions that took place earlier at the finance subcommittee meeting. We also made a decision to have a public hearing on the budget and not participate this Thursday evening in the joint meeting with the city council due to the nature of our budget and the short time that we have to deal with it. We also discussed at that meeting efficiencies with respect to the substitute budget, whether or not we could be more efficient by minimizing the amount of substitutes and maximizing the amount of staff, MTAs or PARS. We also identified programs that we would like to bring back, and you heard a couple of them this evening, middle school intramurals and freshman sports, and some other items. We also had a discussion about future needs and information, how we determine how much is spent on substitutes, prioritization with respect to staffing and programs, further information with regard to availability of grants and grant money that can be utilized. So, those were basically the minutes of our subcommittee, so I need a motion to accept the minutes if someone will be so kind.
Motion has been made to accept the minutes of the June 11th finance meeting. Do we have a second? Properly seconded, all in favor? Opposed?
Then we need a motion to accept the report.
Okay, and then a motion to accept the report. Do we have one of those? Motion's made, properly seconded by Mr. Jordan, all in favor? Opposed? Approved unanimously. Is that it, Mr. Minichella?
That's about it for me.
Okay. So we asked to open on a new business. If any other member of the school committee has any new business they'd like to bring forward? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor? Meeting adjourned.